So my call to order the Town Hall Favorite Zoning Commission Regular Meeting in private fashion on Monday, February 6th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in Town Hall First Floor Conference Room at 302 Main Street Old Silver. Seated tonight, that's me, Bob Friedman Chairman, Mark Calderola, Vice Chair, Mark DeMonico seated for Geraldine Lewis this evening will be Justin Terribilli and regular Commission Member of House of Congress Anne Marie Thorson, also present and alternate Sandy DeSenza, noted absence of Jerry Lewis and John Henry. Also at the table up here this evening is the zoning enforcement officer Chris Costa and our clerk Ms. McWhicken. We have three, six, nine, twelve people in the audience in the room and eight online?
Nine.
Nine, nine online. Next on the agenda is minutes. Our previous meeting of January 18th. Any additions or corrections for the minutes? And if you're going to have a motion to approve, Mark DeMonico, we would still approve the minutes of Wednesday, January 18th as presented. If there are second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Anne Marie Thorson. Any discussion on the motion regarding the minutes of January 18th on appearing? All in favor of approving the minutes of January 18th, 2023 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five in favor, none opposed, no objections. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Do we have any correspondence except outside of application materials before this evening?
None.
No? Thank you. Next on the agenda is a preliminary discussion about solar panels. Proposed petition to amend the Old Silver zoning regulations to change the definition of structure. They have an exclusion for attached or detached solar panels over non-residential parking spaces. Applicant Saber Point Marina LLC, Agent Attorney David Royce, in a preliminary discussion will hear what you have in mind and give some direction if possible without actually taking a vote on the matter. Understood.
Thank you. Mr. Royce, I believe you were provided with a draft of a regulation that had to reduce the current zoning definition for structure. And what the tech is, would eliminate solar panels over non-residential parking spaces from the, and that to the exception under the second paragraph referring to regulation. That paragraph includes a number of things, but a detached solar panel is considered to be with structure. So this would need to be in the exclusion. Saber Point Marina is the potential applicant and it could be, they have obviously a non-residential property and they would like to be able to put solar panels over the parking spaces which are at the south end of the building. That's the portion of the end building where they have access to the health spa and that area. That's where they're going to locate it. So this simply puts solar panels over non- residential parking spaces as an exception so that it doesn't count for ground coverage. As you probably are aware, Saber Point Marina is very close to which ground coverage requirements because it is a densely developed property. It meets the coverage regulations. Now, I haven't done a full calculation to see how this is better, but they believe it's not only a good idea for that, but it is potentially a good idea for other non-residential commercial establishment to be able to have solar panels over their parking spaces. That's it.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any questions? Dennis Martin, over the non-residential parking spaces on the southwest, is that southwest or southeast though?
That's the south side.
South side.
But that's, that's what their intention were to put it. The regulation doesn't specify which side.
Would it be over the entire parking area inside the building?
No, it would be their intent to only put it over the parking spaces at the subtly into the building adjacent to that building entrance. And one of the reasons why they have a provision or an extension would be their intention to extend the solar panel and have it either attached to the building or very close to the building.
Would there be any elimination of parking spaces?
Yeah, not any more than there would be otherwise. So this would not require any additional illumination.
Elimination?
Illumination.
Illumination. I was asking, and sorry, it wasn't clear, would there be part, loss of parking spaces as a result of solar panels in that section?
No. No, it would be putting the solar panels over the existing parking spaces.
And, and it would be supported by some means that would touch the ground of the parking lot?
There would, there would be a pillar or pole.
And that would be a pole for each of the 10 foot by 20 foot panels in each corner?
I don't think it would be.
But it could be.
Required for each of them.
Well, we're all familiar with the tightness of the parking at the, at this site. Saber Point and Marina, first salt spa combination. And we're aware that parking sometimes overflows onto the town parking at the pavilion across the College Street Extension. And any reduction in the parking space that's on site would, would, would impact the non-conformity regarding parking. And so if these poles are either in the aisles for the parking or in the parking spaces, there's no way that they could not increase a non-conformity. So that's one point. They, it doesn't specify how many panels. Is there a limit to how many panels beyond the, the square footage of the paved area? No, no. What would be the height of the panels? Because one concern would be access for fire department vehicles, ambulance, police, tow trucks, any of the delivery vehicles that, that might have to access say the septic treatment facility on the harbor one side of the property. Any kind of truck that would have to get in there would have to be able to freely move in and among any of the proposed talked about solar panels. And the fire department, I'm sure would have concerns about the, what you call the extensions of a solar panel from the parking space to an adjacent building. With that being on the 10 foot side or the 20 foot side of the panel would be one concern from, from, from where I sit. But the fire department advises us regularly to pay attention to ground plantings near buildings so that they would have ladder access points. And never mind the answer for say the snorkel or the, the fire truck with the boom to get into the parking lot and to put out some emergency on an upper story, but they'd also have to be able to get ground ladders up to the building. And so anything that would attach to the building would, would have to by definition be, be in the way of the ground ladder at that point. And so to eliminate, to add solar panels of, as you described them to the parts of the structure definition which are excluded from being called a structure, seems to me to create a lot more problems than saving the planet by having some more solar panels at that location. So they should plant, any kind of plantings that are influenced by the shade cast by solar panels would, then there's beautiful landscaping all around that parking lot, inadequate landscaping on the interior, but any, any plantings that would suffer from loss of sunlight would also create conditions of increasing non-conformity. I can see a lot of reasons why eliminating solar panels from the definition of structure can cause a lot of problems, not just at this location, but to any other non-residential lot in town that might consider solar panel.
I understand. Thank you. I'm not going to attempt to debate that, but I, I think from, I know this is a beneficial conversation because one of the things I think needs to be done would be to either describe this as an accessory use because it's over a parking space which would require a either site plan or a special exception, probably a special exception.
Oh, but it, but it would be for any non-residential lot. And so there are some lots for where, for which elimination of structure from the definition might not require a special exception. You're just talking about.
What I'm saying is.
The one you represent.
Yeah. What I'm saying is it could be added under the amendment that it be a, a special exception for any.
A special exception definition. We have, I think we have a lot of exemptions, exceptions and exclusions in our regulations. And you'd have to convince us as a commission that adding more would, would be to the benefit of the town. And then, and why would the definition of structure regarding solar panels apply only to non-residential lots? Wouldn't somebody want to put up solar panels that have like a carport on their property and that could serve multiple uses there? So the slicing and dicing the definition of structure according to solar panels is, is a pretty widespread topic.
Understood. So that, I take that as an issue. I understand that. And I would be expected to address that particular issue. The height, I think becomes a, an issue that can be, that can be addressed. Also the effect of the, any sort of pole or the pillars, that when you say increases a non-conformity. I'm not sure what would be non-informing to have a, for the pole and then cover yourself. It would be.
And with regard to the poles.
Parking and a presidential structure, that's fine. Also, it certainly could be allowed in presidential situations.
And with regard to.
An objection reason for doing it is because of regulation right now, or appears to be directed towards not having satellite dishes or other things of that nature, you know, spread out on a, on a residential lot without being subject to ground coverage setbacks and others required.
Well, the, the parking lot is already impervious. And so it would not impact the total coverage of impervious matter on the lot. It's just a matter of it being a structure. And we have limits to coverage of a lot based on buildings and structure. Right? So, and I have questions also regarding the supports and their ability to withstand wind forces that might come in off the sound or the river at the location you've mentioned. And is it in a flood zone?
Yes.
Yes. So, so we also have to address concerns regarding the flood zone at that location. And then happens also to be in the Connecticut River Gateway Conservation District. And they have concerns regarding the traditional riverfront scene. And we would certainly get their input with regard to their opinions as to whether or not a parking lot covered with solar panels would be commiserated with a traditional riverfront scene.
Yes, I would expect that. That would be true because that may require that as part of any application that there'd be screening of the, from the river.
Anyone else have questions, comments?
They had lighting in there.
Well, your, your parking lot has more than 20 spaces, so it also has to have lighting. And for nighttime safety, you know, the people parking cars there. So any light poles that would be made ineffective by solar panels in the way would have to be compensated for by some kind of lighting under the panel. And would those existing light poles then be eliminated? So you'd have to consider all those things if, if, if this were to move forward.
Michelle.
Never mind the, what's under the parking lot. We happen to know that there is facilities and service the building that are under the pavement of that parking lot. And that they should not be impacted by installation or weather activities regarding the, the panels.
I think a lot of things you mentioned are very site specific and that's one of the reasons why.
Right.
I think it needs to be, not just a zoning permit, but that it be either a site plan or a special exception.
Right. All right. Anything else? Nope. That's it. That's, that's where.
Maybe a lot, so.
A lot of things to consider.
That's why we came to you first. Thank you very much.
Next up on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing regarding Fine Federal Cannabis Application for Special Acceptance Use for 2,600 square feet retail recreational marijuana dispensary for 100 square feet vacant space and 1,000 square feet in storage above. 233 Boston Post Road, accessories map 44 lot 11 with a business B for register. Applicant Fine Federal Cannabis, Agent Attorney Amy Sutcliffe. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Trump.
How are you?
Good. Hi, Amy Sutcliffe. For the record, you're representing the applicants. We are here on a continuation from your meeting on, it was January 18th. And we had kept the hearing open because there were a couple of commission members that were absent. So we're here if there are any questions or comments about the revised application. We're happy to address them. We have Dave Sullivan and our Sheldon Crosby, our architect, are both available virtually. So if anybody has any questions, otherwise there's any other public comment, we're happy to hear that and then I can wrap up.
Let's see. I have some questions regarding the, well, what I just read from, from fill the agenda regarding the application. There's the square footage designated for the retail operation of recreational marijuana sale is to take the place of what was formally approved as the square footage for medical marijuana.
Correct.
Ratings.
Correct.
The rest of the building is to be, remain unused or for storage or?
Correct. We've labeled it as vacant on the plans. And what we committed to in the draft condition of approval is that anything beyond the 2,600 square feet, which was the comparable medical dispensary, will remain vacant, not associated with use for a dispensary without further approval from this commission.
All right. And I listened, oh, I listened to the recording of the meeting and I feel that after listening to that hour plus recording that I am prepared and knowledgeable enough to participate in deliberations on this matter. And in that recording, I heard you say that Fine Federal wouldn't lease it to a third party. And you said how it would be kept vacant, not for use by the dispensary.
Correct.
That doesn't yet answer my question about what that space might be used for other than not for the dispensary. Will it be used for storage? Will some other party use it for something else?
No. We've committed to keeping that space completely unoccupied so that way we could represent that we control the entire building.
Okay.
The only space in the building that would be generating any parking or traffic demand is the 2,600 square feet. So that way, in essence, what we were trying to do was make it clear that what you needed to look at until we were to come back, if at any point we ever did, would be just that 2,600 square feet as a parking and traffic generator. Provide that assurance to the commission.
Okay, that, that answers my question. With regard to the, the previously existing by variance residence there, where was that located in the building?
It was, it's upstairs. There's a small second floor that would also be removed and remain completely unused like the rest of the site.
And the plumbing fixtures and all the rest will be removed.
Absolutely.
All right. Will the variance remain on the land records?
The variance remains on the land records because it runs with the land.
Yeah, I know. So I'm asking you, will it remain on the land record?
It does by, by.
I understand that it does. Will you allow it to remain or will you take action to remove it from the land records? It can be removed.
I have never heard that, to be, to be honest. If you wanted some assurance that we will not use that space or somehow try to activate the residential use again, we're happy to commit to that on the record. But from a legal perspective, I don't know that I can unilaterally override something that runs with the land.
I know we've had, the applicant that was just here before, once had a variance that was, that is not long, it's not on the record now, but it was for a time. And based on at least that one experience, I don't know what the machinery was to not have the variance on the land record now. But in my experience, there, there was some way to remove a variance. And so, well.
I will be clear on the record that there is no intention to use the residential unit in connection with this home.
Okay. On the, thank, thank you. I have, I received in my packet, two pages that one, one has the site plan, what I would call the site plan layout, and the other has the floor plan. All right? So are there any more for this application than these two? So they reference the, reference the earlier application plan?
So the only, so we have the survey, which is the existing condition survey, the one page site plan that you have, and then you should have a floor plan sheet.
All right. So am I to take it from that? Since your parking lot has more than 20 spaces, it's, it's required to have lighting for safety at night. And the, the lighting years where on this?
We were not chose, we were not changing anything from the previously approved site plan.
Well, I could look at it then.
I was going to say, I don't know that this depicts the lighting locations. If you wanted us to comply with the existing, excuse me, with, with respect to the lighting requirements. We're, again, certainly happy to do so, but we hadn't made any changes to what was previously.
In zoning regulations in section 62.4.2, quite B, and especially points one through, one through four in that part, in order to have adequate lighting for the 20 spaces, then some kind of light poles would have to be on, on the plan and, and install. And they're, and they're regulated in terms of not, not taller than 14 feet from the topmost part of the light fixture to the grade. And that the bottom of the light pole will be flush with grade, not on some kind of a concrete pad of any kind. Those are typical questions that we get regarding lights. We could put those down as conditions for, in, in, in a, in a possible motion. I have a question regarding the windows and the, the solid appearance thereof because of the state statute that requires some kind of opacity or something. Right. So that's state statute stuff. But in our regulations, we have in, in the section nine and definitions for sign window, we specifically do not want a solid appearance to windows. And in that sense that the state has again overruled our, our local zoning desires, my question would be does Fine Federal have a trademark color scheme?
It has a color scheme. It does not involve the windows. So the.
Right. Well, where I'm going is whatever you put on the windows to comply with the state statute should not be aligned with a particular color scheme or color theme that has anything to do with Fine Federal. If it does, it becomes a sign in the window.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, without that. I see that in the first application and in this one, the applicant has consented to request from the state the encroachment permit in order to install sidewalk along the right, along the, the property line in the, in the right of way.
Correct.
Correct. If the state grants that, then we end up with a sidewalk for public health and safety and part of the sidewalk plan and our regulations regarding vertical sidewalk. Okay. Section 62 and 62.2.1 and 62.2.1A, three and four. We then have the question of street trees. Are these four trees that are shown on this plan that are all in the right of way, are those now existing?
But the ones that are in, right, along the right of way, those are existing trees. The ones that are interior to the property line were proposed and approved in the 2018.
Right.
Approval.
So my, my question is if, if the application for the encroachment permit is granted by the state and the sidewalk is to result at this property, what would happen to those four trees? They might well have to be removed in order to install a sidewalk. And then in order to comply with the Old Silver zoning regulations regarding landscaping in section 63, we particularly have street trees that are required. And if you're removing four street trees, there should have, there should be no less. And if you're removing four street trees, there should have, there should be no less than four street trees replaced. On the interior side of of the lot. And our regulations require one each and every forty feet. That means within each forty foot stretch, there should be one tree.
Correct.
Right? And you could go. Thirty nine feet and have it, have a tree at thirty nine feet and then go thirty nine feet and have a tree. But that's it. You can't, you can't go beyond that without having another tree.
Correct.
Right? So and we even have a diagram in the regulations to explain that for those who have trouble understanding. But uh, you you seem to get it. So.
Yes.
Uh, if there is to be a sidewalk, then these four trees at least to address the uh. Street trees, section sixty two point two, one, eight, three and four. Those should at least be replaced in the front landscaped area on the interior of the lot. And then we get to the next question about um. A nonconformity and the opportunity to correct it. And if the sidewalk is going to be extended. All along the property line up the part that's called Springbrook Road. It will cross through the area that is there as a dirt turnout from Springbrook Road. And if the sidewalk is to cut through that dirt turnout. Then anyone who is in the habit of using it in its current. Configuration would be driving over the sidewalk. So that's an issue for the probably the state to to address, but. Uh, as far as old civic zoning is concerned, the site plan does not show the condition of a turnout. Crossing onto the property at that location.
Correct.
That would be an existing condition that really should have shown up on the plans. It's not part of your activities, but it's an existing condition and it's not there. And. In that regard, particularly but not limited to a sidewalk installation would be. That the front landscape area for the twenty five feet from the right of way towards the interior of the property. Is required in our legal regulations to be landscaped. And yes, it's a previous, it's a previously existing nonconforming dirt turnout, but. And it didn't show up on the plans, but if there's going to be a sidewalk there, then that dirt turnout part that's on your property should be landscaped. Not a drivable dirt surface.
I would agree with you that that should.
Right.
Be planted back over grass, et cetera. Yes.
Right.
So I would just on that to sort of close that item. Um, our draft, we had provided in the draft condition number five was the reference to the um. Sidewalks within the the draft that I submitted on January. Um, ten, we had, like I said, that condition about the sidewalks, we would certainly be willing to. To the extent that we need to um. Modify that condition to reflect that if the sidewalks are permitted by DOT, that we would need to comply with the. Street tree um, regulation and.
And the front.
Reint and the reintroduction of landscaping for that.
Right.
Yeah. Um.
My concern with the turnout is if if you applied for it but did not get the encroachment permit for the sidewalk. Then my concern is that the turnout might continue to exist as such. And with the described. Uh, mode of operation to limit the rate of vehicle visits to the driveway. That for those who might arrive. Um, outside of their appointment time window, that would become the cell phone parking lot. And that is not uh permissible and uh. How do we address that in in if there is no sidewalk and street tree installation and landscaping to discourage that?
If you would, if that's the concern, we would be happy to landscape it. And and eliminate that as a condition of approval regardless of what happens with the sidewalk. There's no intention to use that area for anything. And I know.
You know, but the customers might.
Correct. And and certainly. Much like the parking lot or anything else, if we saw people ordering, we would have, we would ask them to leave and not park there, but you would like the assurance that. There's not a possibility of that happening because there's no longer. A pullout area there. We can absolutely agree to um, to landscape that so that way there's no um.
Okay. So we got the regulations covered on that one. Uh. You answered some of the questions that I have written down in other places here. I got that uh. Oh, with regard to the um. The operations and the parking. Um, up on page two of the statement of use dated December thirteenth.
Yes.
It says uh, under operations. Operationally, the applicant anticipates approximately eight employees will be on site during the hours of operation. And in the. Traffic report from and reviewed by H and H. I think that's easier to access there. The H and H letter dated January tenth, twenty twenty three. At the bottom of the page, it says the applicant also noted their expected. Demand by tran by transactions, which are made by appointment only. Um. And then. Second. Third sentence, the new proposal is reduced to at most thirty to thirty five transactions typically during Friday midday. All right. And then on the. Next, so I'm I I'm anticipating eight of up to eight employees, eight employees parking onsite. As designated by employee parking spaces somewhere.
Correct.
Yeah. And uh. Then there would be. This type of uses requires nineteen spaces. And based on the calculation by H and H and number seven on their review comments. If there was an overlap of three appointment windows per register, there would be a total of fifteen parking spaces occupying three appointments. Times five registers plus the eight parking spaces for employees. For a total peak parking demand of up to twenty three parking spaces. And you're providing twenty seven. Um. And then, where is that one? Uh, uh, under findings in the second paragraph. The latest I T E parking generation manual indicates peak parking demand for this type of. Lane uses nineteen parking spaces based on our calculations. If there's an overlap of three, blah, blah, it's it's the, it's a duplicate of the other other paragraph. But there's something in here. Where is that one? Um. Talking about the uh, the number of employees outside of. Open to the public hours could be higher than eight. I think I saw that it could be fifteen.
That was the prior application.
That was the prior. In this application.
Eight employees, we show eight parking spaces. So with the reduction in the square footage. We need fewer employees to run the number of registers and fulfill the orders.
I got that, but the the. The maximum number of employees on site during. Up open hours will be eight. That's what I get. Will there be a higher number of employees on site outside of the open hours? I picked that up somewhere in the reading here and and from the from the parking people. There may be, there may be an increased number of employees on site outside of the open for business hours.
At this point, no, we're not anticipating that we're going to go beyond the eight because we likely don't need that many. Um, for the size facility.
At certain points, you're going to have to. Cause you're going to have a shift change. And you're going to have four, you're going to stagger them, I'm I'm sure probably so avoid maximum amount, but if your shift changed eight people out. You're going to have eight other people waiting to come in. So you're actually have. You could have sixteen people if the shift changes all at the same time.
Well, that's just just the. Yeah, that, yeah, that, that's a, should be, should be a small time on the clock.
Yeah, but it's.
But yes. But that's, that's, they're providing twenty seven when the traffic people say that twenty three should. All right. So we got, we got twenty seven. It complies with the written regulations that we have. Um, we have a. Have you seen the review from the old server fire department?
Yes.
All right. And uh. Do you have a response with regard to their interest in the auto turn analysis? It doesn't have to be name brand auto turn. But they can provide the uh dimensional requirements to reproduce the um, turning. Mathematics that auto turn typically involves.
Right. So we looked at that because we're not changing anything from the approved site plan. We don't think applies because we've done this, the site plan was reviewed and frankly, most of the fire comments were. Raised at that time and resolved in the context of that application. So particularly given the size of the building. Um, and the fact that the plan's already been reviewed and approved back in two thousand eighteen. Um, we don't think there's any issue with the the fire response.
Okay. Uh, with regard to their requests on the label number signage of the building. And um, and and uh. All fire lanes should be signed and striped. Uh, and with with regard to zoning's influence over those things. Sign the labeling numbering and signage of the building and striping of uh, fire lanes on the pavement. Are are concerns that do uh. Concern the uh zoning commission. Some things are building department related and some things are. State statute issues that zoning doesn't have any control over. Things to do with the Knox box and a uh alarm panels and things like that. That's not zoning. So. Uh, that number eleven in their report on the reverse is the town has an ordinance. Requiring the F D C sign. So.
I think the photo in the memo is incorrect. It's it's a different. It it's a reference to a different site plan, but we found the correct one and that's not an issue. We it's it's a. Um, some sort of, you know, fire department. So that's acceptable.
We've uh, um. Chris is fine. The we referral from the architectural review board dated December sixteenth. Uh, they recommended approval of previous special exception application. And since there's uh no proposing any exterior changes. They the previous approval will hold without a new review. And. From the consistency with the plan of conservation, the development, the planning commission. Sends us a letter via hand delivery of January sixth, twenty twenty three. Reporting to the zoning commission that the planning commission recommends approval of the above matter. As it is consistent with the town plan of conservation and development. And. Well. All right. And I was, we do. Are there any other referrals for this? Application. I got A R B and planning, the E D C. Oh, the E D C had an interesting one where they had a motion. Similar to that which um was mentioned in the prior application and the motion did not pass. So we did not receive a clear uh in favor of or of opposition to message from the E D C. For the record. And.
So at the previous meeting, we had read in all the referrals into the record. The referrals were mailed or emailed on December fifteenth.
Right. We have received uh today dated February sixth, a letter from our attorney of half Matt Willis. Of Haller and Sage. Have you seen that yet?
Yes, I did.
For the, for the record and the public, the the letters of age and a half. It's been uh posted on the website under the materials regarding this application. Under the zoning commission, uh, section of the town web pages. You can read it there, but uh, just touch on the individual sections here. Date of February sixth from Matt Willis. Response to questions raised at the fine federal public hearing of January eighteenth. Uh, with regard to character. Character is still applicable in village districts, but not applicable to this application. The state statutes removed character from. The general statute second eight dash two, no longer a basis for denying an application. We have also since then removed character from almost every. Use that was in our regulations before. There's still one that I know of. But all the others have been removed. We can't regulate character. Connecticut drug free zone laws. Um. This has to do with the state statutes. And if specific, the statutes carve out an exception regarding cannabis. And for federal drug free zone laws. Um, violations of the federal statute. Uh. Any person who violates section eighty four, eight forty one, A one of this title or section eight fifty six of this title. That being twenty one U S code. Eight sixty uh, by distributing possessing with intent to distribute or manufacturing or controlled substance in. Or on or within a thousand feet of the real property comprising a public or private. Elementary vocational or secondary school. Or a public or private college, junior college or university or a playground or housing facility. Owned by a public housing authority or within a hundred feet of a public or private youth center. Public swimming pool or video arcade facility. Um, I looked and. Beach babies doesn't meet those categories. Um. So the federal law regarding cannabis regulation and the controlled substance, and it's still a schedule one drug. Under twenty one U S C eight twelve. Cannabis establishments located anywhere are at risk of forfeiture by the federal government. Requiring the forfeiture of real or general property traceable to a violation of the Con- Controlled Substances Act. But any Mr. Willis concludes with this statement. Any risk associated with federal law and fine federal's operation would belong to fine federal and not the zoning commission. So we, we can only do what we can do and we can't answer to other regulation jurisdictions. That's. It's not what, not what we can do. All right. Uh, any, anyone else have any questions?
An operational one. I'd like to um. Understand that your original application was targeted at forty five transactions per hour. And now reduced to thirty transactions per hour. In other words, a thirty three percent reduction involved, right? Your original appra- application had fifteen to twenty three employees. Which averages nineteen and you're going to eight. So a reduction of fifty eight percent of your workforce. Handling two thirds of your volume. So you're really reducing your manpower. How did you manage to do that? When a lot of your manpower is somewhat is somewhat fixed, being a manager, being a security, being uh. Traffic control, being ID verifications and all of that, leaving you. To people to, I'm just, I don't know the numbers, but leaving few people to do the actual transaction of the the customer. I had a hard time understanding the numbers. They didn't equate to me. And it it looked like it was done just to reduce the parking uh requirements.
So with respect to the um employee count, when you reduce the number of registered. Which we had, I believe it was either twelve or fifteen in the prior application, um, we're down to. which we had, I believe it was either twelve or fifteen in the prior application, um we're down to five. So right there, there's a substantial reduction in the number of um people that are needed to operate the registers. And then from there, it's just a question of staffing and how many people we anticipate, as we explained previously. We might have um, you know, employees who might be in early to fulfill orders and then leave before the customers um start arriving. And so like you were saying, you know, there might be some overlap of or transition of employees. Um, but we do think that the, the eight is consistent with the number of registers and expected reduction in sales um that, that we're anticipating at this location.
It's just been that up in my mind, it's still that up in my mind.
Right, I, I, I think that the answer is it's not necessarily linear, um, so.
Because some of them are fixed. I mean, your, your manager's probably not going to do much from that standpoint, your security is probably not going to do much at that point. And uh anybody patrolling the, the, the parking lot, one or two people can't be at a cash register, so I just had a hard time on that and verifying IDs and whatnot, it didn't add up in my mind to, to your reduction.
So, so practically speaking, the person who is at the front door, who's checking IDs, is monitoring the parking lot. There's people inside and then you have people running the register, um. I have Rick Harbey on the, on the call, um, he runs our other existing facilities right now, so if you have questions about the operations, but we do think that the numbers, you know, they're, they're not made up, they weren't intended to comply with parking, because frankly, if that's what we were doing, we still have three additional spaces that are not accounted for, um, so. You know, to your point of um employee overlap, we've assumed eight employees and designated eight employees parking pace, parking places at any one time. We've assumed three sets of customers at any one time, we don't think we're going to have three sets of customers at any given time. And then we still have an additional four spaces available, so there's actually, you know, to your point of we might have a window where an employee's leaving and an employee's arriving, those extra four spaces are still there even if we had three sets of customers who have um come early for their, for their contact time are inside and left late. So we still have, we think there's more than sufficient parking, um, that's, that's available on site, even with um that turnover and, you know, times of transition, so we, we do think it's, it's adequate. If you are concerned about that, um, we kept the condition with respect to um a parking management plan that would be associated with um entries, exits, opening, we'd be happy to accommodate, um, you know, additional information. You know, if you want us to submit additional information or management about how employees would be um staged, whatever, as part of our uh parking management plan, that would be reviewed by your staff before we open, we can certainly do that.
Anyone else have any questions?
Did I understand, excuse me, did I understand that the person at the door checking IDs and whatnot will also be monitoring the parking lot?
That, that's the general operation, in grand opening, there may be additional people um involved. But the, the person who's at the, at the door is there and readily sort of looking at, you know, who's in the parking lot, knows who just exited the facility, just entered, um.
Oh, if something has to happen in the parking lot, will that employee, will he use the front door to go to the parking lot?
Or there may be, um, Rick, I'm not sure if you can answer this, there may also be, you know, they radio into another employee who comes out or, or something like that, it's, it's been very rare. Um, I think as you heard during the last hearing, um, it's been very rare that we've had any incident in, in all the locations um with respect to any kind of incident in the parking lot.
And that, and how you propose to operate here is operating in these three locations that you're currently.
Correct, the, the, the other locations have all been um uh operational for not quite a month now, um, and most of them are allowed in walk-in sales because it's been, been manageable.
And you, and you mentioned, and I'm not sure if it was prior application or this one, but parking plan or assistance by LAS, et cetera, onsite. Um, would that be eight individuals or multiple individuals?
So we, that we've continued to include that, that's the draft condition three, who put that together. Um, it's, it has been depending on the, the location, um, there is somebody from LAS that's, that's managing, puts together the plan, and then frankly, was a, a function of how many people they were anticipating, number of transactions an hour, things like that.
Hypothetically, if there was two or three attendants, where would they park?
We might stage them offsite and have somebody drop them off.
Do you have part, stage parking already onsite?
No, that, that would be part of what we, what LAS would do in evaluating what's available onsite, what the conditions of approval might be.
But that would be on their, their responsibility.
And, and that would be. Right, anything that we were going to propose along that lines, whether it was offsite parking, whether it was how many people are managing, would all be part of the parking management plan, and that would be reviewed by your staff for compliance with the condition before we could um open, and so if there were concerns, those are certainly something that um Chris could, could look at in, you know, the parking management plan of understanding, you know, where people were going to park, how people, whether it was parking management or numbers of people, would all be addressed in that context.
Um, changing the subject, I'll for that for a second, um, now I think in the first application, the anticipated three percent for the town of Old Saybrook was between two hundred fifty and three hundred thousand dollars. Saying it's three hundred thousand, that's an estimated sales, annual sales was about ten and a dollar.
Correct.
Right? I think I also saw the same dollar amounts in the revised application, which would indicate to me that you see no reduction in sales with a reduction in staff or something.
Right, so what we anticipated in the original application, the range we gave was two fifty to three fifty as a range of anticipated sales. Um, this actually came up in the discussion with the Economic Development Commission as well. Um, and I think the expectation is, is that we might be at the lower range, you know, closer to the two fifty as opposed to maybe the three fifty, given the limitation on the number um of transactions, but again, it also depends on, on, because it's based on sales themselves, um, if this area generated higher sales, you know, somebody perhaps, and, and I going to pick numbers, I don't know what the actual average sales are um in the state right now, but if, for example, the average transaction statewide is fifty dollars and the average transaction here was a hundred dollars, obviously that's going to account for um the numbers being different and, and that's why there was that range, um, and that I think the other component would be, um, you know, with, with the operations, um, I think we might have discussed this a little bit last time. Maybe somebody who might have otherwise been inclined to come in on a Saturday, if there was a spot available, maybe comes up, you know, comes in on a Tuesday at lunch hour instead of, you know, Friday, so we're, we're anticipating that. Um, we do think it's still a reasonable range of, of what we're um anticipating for the location.
So on the low range, you, from first application to second, you see the same setup?
We're, that's what we're hoping, again, it's, it's, right, it's, it's still business, you know, our best business judgment.
Right, I understand that, and, and best guess then, basically, the, on the knowledge of your um business. But yet you're going to do it with eight employees versus the high of twenty-three on the first application, am I understanding that correctly?
Right, and, and I think, like I said, I think that's the reason for the range, is that, you know, at, at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're talking about ten plus million at, you know, two fifty a year as an estimate, we're talking closer to, you know, seven million dollars. Um, so I think that's, you know, when you think about the, the difference of a three million dollar in your business, that may be.
More, more value typically, it takes more to do that volume, so.
Correct.
It leaves a question in my mind. The first application could, could have been done differently because you're basically saying they're, they're equal in terms of checking the sales.
Well, no, I, I think what I'm saying is that we were hoping for the higher ends in, in the original application and we, we designed it to accommodate larger sale. Obviously, there were concerns about that kind of volume being generated literally from a traffic and parking perspective, and so we went back and looked at it, and so we're probably, again, at the lower. Not an insignificant number.
Is there, is there a staffing um prototype of where the eight people will be involved in?
Um, Rick, do you have a, a typical breakdown? My, my understanding is that um we would let in.
Yeah, I'm here, Amy, I'm here. Can you hear me?
So with, I'm not sure if you could hear the question, but with, with eight employees, do you have an expectation of um how those eight would be broken down? You know, we have somebody at the front door, we have people working the register, what the, what the distribution might be?
Right, so as was mentioned before, it's, you know, it's part of the, the parking management, so we're going to have LAS there to take care of the parking lot. We will have a greeter out front who'll be identifying people to come into the dispensary. And then we have people inside doing sales and management, so like you got to distinguish between the parking management part and what we've seen in the three locations so far is that LAS has done a great job of getting people into the, into the parking lot and out of the parking lot very safely. And again, we're doing all pre-orders, there's no one walking in uh initially in the, to the locations, it wasn't until the last week or two where we saw that we could possibly have people come up and come into the dispensary based on the initial input of people coming in was, was significant, obviously. Yes, it has lessened, obviously, as more dispensaries have opened in this state. Uh, but our parking management has worked fine, our greeter is there, people have to present their ID when they come in, and then yes, we do have people at the register as well as a manager in there, making sure people process through in a timely manner, so it's worked very well.
With the, with the five registers that you propose under this application, will all five be staffed during all opening hours? And if not, what's the minimum number staffing at, at the registers?
Well, it's based on the volume that comes into the, the pre-orders, obviously, so, you know, we won't have eight people, we won't have people standing by a register if there's no one coming in to pick up an order.
Assuming, assuming uh during opening, uh you have to staff all five registers for a moment, that leaves you three other employees, what are the other three employees doing?
Well, you've got, obviously you've got people and, and we have a vault, we have, we have merchandise coming out of the vault out to the registers, so someone's taking care of that, we have someone out front bringing, you know, having people come in with their IDs, so we'll staff it as we need to to take care of the volume coming in based on the pre-orders, we, we know the metrics, we see the amount of orders that are coming in. We're not going to have people standing at a register doing nothing, obviously, that's make any kind of business sense, we're going to, we're going to respond to the amount of orders we get, if we don't get a lot of orders, then we're not going to have five people staying at a register, obviously.
Are the people doing the parking part of the employee count, head count?
No, that's a parking management.
Where are they parking?
Right now, with three lo- with the three locations now, they bring, they, they shuttle those people to our location, pick them up and bring them back. We're paying for that in all three locations right now. So those, those, those last mark, last people are not parking in the parking lot. They're being driven down there and taken home. Stanford, Newington, and Willimantic. It's worked, it's worked perfect so far, not a lot of issues in all three locations. And we've been at it for five weeks now.
Thank you. All right, yes, Chris.
Uh, Chief Spera is on Zoom and would like to speak when you're ready for her.
On, ongoing.
Chief Spera is on Zoom, would like to speak when you're ready.
We'll, we'll get to you, you're in the room, all right, um, Chief Spera, uh, this is being a public hearing and um you are the town um local traffic authority. Uh, do you, do you have anything to um enlighten the commission and applicant regarding at, at this time?
Just give, unmute him because he's on a regular. Just give him a minute.
He's muted.
He's unmuted, I can't unmute him, I can't like ask to unmute.
All right, let's see.
He needs to figure out. Shouldn't prompt him, he's on a regular telephone.
We see, we see you have raised hand, right, yeah, so Zoom controls.
I think. I, if he's on a regular, he needs to say, yes, I'm going to go to panelists, but if he's on a regular.
Oh. There's a hammer up at the top.
We're trying to um use this.
There we go.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, thank you very much. Uh, before I make any comment on the uh application that's in front of the board, I just want to uh reiterate the comments that uh one of my patrolmen had with each and every member of the uh, of the board there. Um, so just please remember if that you receive any threats at all concerning this application or any other application whatsoever, uh you should immediately contact our police department. Uh, our investigation into the attempted coercion of a zoning board member to vote in the affirmative for this recent application by an unknown actor does remain active, so if anyone else gets any other pressure, please let us know because that is not appropriate. Uh, with respect to this latest referral of two thirty-three Boston Post Road, I find myself a little bit disappointed, uh both in my professional capacity and as a town resident. Following the previous action by the zoning board to deny fine federal's application to open an adult-use recreational marijuana retail store at two thirty-three Boston Post Road, fine federal filed both a civil suit against the town and a minorly adjusted new application. Uh, so my first question is, what does the applicant actually seek? Do they seek approval for what they're suing for? Or do they seek approval uh for the proposal that's in front of you? Does anyone know the answer to that question?
I would say the answer to that is yes, they're seeking whatever they can get. So.
We're here tonight to discuss the pending application and not litigation. We're here tonight to discuss the pending application and not litigation.
Right, and from the zoning commission's perspective, tonight, we have before us an application that is what it is. We also happen to know that there was a prior application and we recognize the details and the differences between tonight's application and that. Aside from what the zoning commission conducts as its business, there may or may not be an appeal of a prior decision that in, that resulted in a non-approval. That's in somebody else's court and that's not our, this commission's concern this evening. What the applicant seeks, the applicant seeks. So I would leave it at that, and Attorney Sutcliffe had a comment about your preliminary remarks?
Yes, which I would like clarified because I've never heard this before and given that it was just described somewhat cryptically on the record, I think it's important to clarify what Chief Spera is talking about because I am not aware of any of this issue and I don't know whether there's an implication that the applicant is somehow involved, frankly.
Right.
Absolutely not, no, absolutely not.
Okay, see if you can do that.
Sure, so let, let me talk about the application that's in front of you then, if we, if we can't talk about um the pending litigation, which I understand and respect. Um, so it seems like every time we talk about uh fine federal and their application, there seems to be some sort of tone that anyone that opposes the application is against medical marijuana. And I want to be very clear and on the record that the proposal is not for fine federal to dispense medical marijuana in Old Saybrook. And, you know, some people would say, well, the debate about the application has to do with the new marijuana legislation, and that is not what is before the zoning commission. What's before you is should this applicant be permitted to operate at two thirty-three Boston Post Road in Old Saybrook? That specific address. That specific address. And from the very beginning, I have advocated that two thirty-three Boston Post Road. Is not a proper location for a business that attracts a large amount of customers. We obviously want all of our businesses in Old Sabre to be successful. And for some to be successful, they need a large customer count. Two thirty-three Boston Post Road does not lend itself to be an appropriate location for any business. With a high customer count. I think if we ask the current business that was there, that is there, what their customer count is per day. I'm sure it would be drastically different than what Fine Federal is expecting, even with their amended application. So the Department of Police Services, as the local legal traffic authority, stands by its original statement. That it would be negligent to allow a business with this amount of customer base. Going in the parking lot and out of the parking lot specifically at two thirty-three Boston Post Road. Is negligent to allow the applicant to be there. That does not say that there are not other spots in the town of Old Sabre that would be conducive for any business. That has a large customer count, but again, that's not before us. What's before us is two thirty-three Boston Post Road, and that is not an appropriate uh place. To have this business, I feel that it would be tremendously unsafe for the traffic, both vehicular and pedestrian in that area.
All right, anything, anything further, uh Chief Spear?
No, you know, other than, listen, you you guys have a tough job, right, so the town of Old Sabre has elected. That group right there to make sure that businesses that are prosperous are not in locations. That, uh, you know, cause uh negative attention. Uh, to the roadways, to the vehicle safety and pedestrian safety, and certainly don't cause a problem, so we don't want someone's success. To cause us a community problem, and the only ones that can prevent that from happening. Is you folks sitting there for tonight, so I'm hoping that you listen uh to all the comments as you always do. And I hope that you weigh them appropriately and you put safety first. Thank you.
All right. Okay, then um. We have uh people in the room here, uh, this is a public hearing. And this commission uh allows input from the public, and we will ask um from one side and the other alternating. Is there anyone present in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application? None appearing, is there anyone in this room who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Yes, in the pink, in the middle room.
Thank you, I live on Springbrook Road, I'm maybe a thousand feet, maybe, maybe a little more. I do not walk down there, the highway, cars flying off is bad enough in the summer. Never mind now, it's bad enough, summer's gonna be worse. I have enough traffic on my road, they do sixty miles an hour, the speed limit's twenty-five. I just don't want it at two thirty-three Boston Post Road, I second everything Chief Mosca said, thank you, Jay.
All right.
Can you please state your name, can you state your name for the reference?
Chapel and Mitchell, I've lived in my home for thirty years on Springbrook Road. I'll sell it if they go in there, I guarantee I'll get a sip for it, I know there.
Uh, yes, lady in the purple there, thanks.
Thank you, Linda Marlowe of Sabre, um, I've got some prepared comments. Some of the items that I will refer to, we've discussed already, so um. Anyway, I'll just mention that. I would like to add my name for the number of people opposed to the new application for special inception use. For five federal dispensary to be located in the town of Old Sabre, Connecticut, at two thirty-three Boston Post Road. My first concern is that the new application locates a business which will be distributing a federally regulated controlled substance act. Schedule one drug in close proximity to a well-established child daycare business. The proposed business, I understand, is within six hundred feet of the daycare. This goes to one of the comments of the letter you just read that I was not aware of regarding. Um, location, federal. Five thousand foot location. And I just questioned the definition of playground, but I'm assuming that some um daycare has a playground. Secondly, um, my concern is a subjective one. Based on section fifty-two point six point five neighborhood of the town of Old Sabre, Connecticut zoning regulations. Which require to propose use be evaluated as it relates to the protection of both property values. In my estimation, the proximity for a residential area and child daycare facility. Of a business distributing a schedule one drug is not consistent. With protecting property values and therefore I don't believe that the location of this business. Complies with this requirement of the regulations. In addition to the previously mentioned requirement, the town of Old Sabre website specifically states in part. Quote, the Connecticut general statutes empower the zoning commission to regulate land uses and enforce its regulations. For protection of public health, safety, and welfare, which echoes what um. Uh, Police Captain Spira mentioned, I cannot see how the approval of the proposed use of this property. At two thirty-three Boston Post Road will not negatively negatively impact the public health, safety, and welfare. Of the surrounding community and the town for that matter, which would be in direct contact. The recognition of the zoning commission as identified on the town government website. And even though the state of Connecticut has decided to allow the commercial sale of recreational use of cannabis. And its byproducts, as previously mentioned, marijuana remains on the schedule one substance list. Under the federal control controlled substance act. Which is probably more appropriate today since the marijuana of today is much more potent than the marijuana available in nineteen seventy. When it was first put on this list. With schedule one substances being considered the most dangerous and addictive of drugs. This listing gives in itself a warning that we should do everything we can to protect our citizens in our town. From having to deal with the downside of the sale and use of this product. The negative impacts on the town that I see relate to an increased exposure to R U. To a schedule one substance and the false appearance that this drug is safe to use. As well as a potential increase in crime and other threats to public safety, such as people driving under the influence. In addition, I also see the potential for an increase in drug trafficking from out-of-town people. Since our town would then be put on the map as having an E C on and E C off drug distribution location. All of these issues will force an increase in our level of public services. Do include police, fire, E M Ts, ambulance, child services, medical services due to reactions and overdoses, et cetera. Which will ensure to require more tax dollars that will be. That will way exceed the minimal tax benefit from the cannabis sales. But even more importantly, these issues will negatively affect our quality of life in Old Sabre. Regarding the offer of fifty thousand dollars by Fine Federal. To assist with the cost of a road improvement at the intersection of Springbrook Road and Boston Post Road. These dollars will most likely not cover the D O T costs. A remainder of which must then come out of our state tax dollars, so the benefit is minimal. Lastly, I reread the town of Old Sabre Economic Development Commission, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three letter. And I want to bring to your attention the last sentence in the second paragraph, which we discussed earlier. This sentence states that their vote on a motion to convey. To the zoning commission, the E T C opinion that there are economic benefits, development benefits to the application. As well as local tax benefits and employment benefits actually failed by a vote of two, three, one. And I have a copy of that letter attached. Although I did not confirm this vote. Since minutes of the January twelfth, twenty-three, E T C meeting were not online at the time of my research. It appears based on this letter that the Old Sabre E T C voted against recommending approval of the application for Fine Federal. If that is indeed the case, then I ask the zoning commission to consider that position in its review of the application. In summary, my recommendation to reject this application is based on a proposed location. Or a scheduled one drug distribution business close to a childcare day daycare center. As well as subjective reasons that correlate with the purpose of the zoning commission. To protect public health, safety, and welfare of our town, which in my opinion also includes the protection of home property values. Thank you for the opportunity to present my comments at this public hearing, if you have any questions, you can reach me at my email address. I have a copy for you.
Anyone online raising a hand?
Can you see that?
George, yes, can you turn that, activate? With the hand raised there, it's, was it?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, guys, thanks, and sorry I couldn't be there in person this time, I'm actually traveling on business. So thanks for the opportunity to speak again. I I've presented several arguments to the zoning committee to discuss this application. Fine Federal in general continues to manipulate their application. Um, they're really trying to find a solution to adhere to your zoning practices. But to be clear, this is not the same application that was filed and approved in twenty eighteen. It's not the same company, it's not the same medicinal use. And it's not the same site plan, this parking, the parking spots have been increased from seventeen to twenty-seven to to. To basically accommodate their application, and so this is a different site plan than what was previously approved. That's, that alone is something that you guys could deny this application on. Further, the enforcement of thirty thirty per hour, they've made a lot of stipulations to shoehorn it into this facility. But what happens when they go above thirty per hour? Who's gonna be monitoring? And who's gonna be independently verifying this, that you're relying on their numbers to independently verify this, but. They could change these numbers at any time, and if you're not actively monitoring it, this seems like a nightmare waiting to happen. Also, I heard a lot of discussion around the eight employees. Around shift changes, around parking lot employees. It just doesn't seem like eight employees is enough to run a spot this this facility. The twenty-seven parking spots that they have actually includes two spaces for handicap parking, so really it's twenty-five spots. For employees. Plus, people who can actually walk into the facility. So, twenty-five minus fifteen, that's ten spaces, they have eight spaces for parking lot, there is, or eight spaces for employees. That only leaves two extra spaces. That really doesn't give any amount of extra wiggle room in this parking lot. Which is already very tight and L-shaped, it's not a turnaround like Beach Babies is, like you made us adhere to. It's an actual L parking parking lot which gets quickly congested. The town and, you know, if there was a fire in there and the parking lot's overloaded, there's a huge safety issue. I don't know the woman who was just speaking, but certainly safety issue has to be front and center to zoning regulations. And their approval tonight or disapproval. The town traffic study that you guys performed doesn't really count for parking lots or parking attendants and lazy parking. Basically, standing at the front entrance, turning people around is what go- Governor Sutchen's. Or sorry, Attorney Sutchen's talked about last time, that they're, and again tonight, that they're actually gonna. If the parking lot becomes overflowed, they're gonna have to turn people around and to prevent people, basically stopping. Traffic on that part of the Route One, and this has happened in other towns and other of their facilities. And other marijuana facilities throughout the state of Connecticut, including Branford was a complete disaster, if you read the headlines. This is gonna create an impassable driveway and customers trying to take a left out of that driveway. You're asking for an a complete unsafe situation. Which is gonna call, cause Chief Spear and his law enforcement to be called to the scene to direct traffic. And pull them away from other valuable types of opportu- other types of things that they should really be addressing as a police. As a police have better things to do than deal with cannabis traffic coming in and out of this facility. To address the federal piece. The federal piece does protect children within the drug-free zone that are elementary, elementary actually now defined is. Has always included kindergarten ages, including pre-K because of universal pre-K. So really, the actual definition of this does include. The Fine, Fine Federal's essentially breaking the federal law for drug-free zones by allowing this daycare in this spot. The town is taking, equally taking, as much as the attorney doesn't want, didn't want to admit it, the town is equally taking on. Is culpable in this situation, they're allowing for this to be placed within fifteen hundred feet. Of a, of an actual uh elementary school, a private elementary school. Overall, zoning is local, and really, you're supposed to protect the surrounding businesses and you're also supposed to protect the schoolchildren. Your your job as a zoning, zoning committee, which I hope you make the right decision tonight in declining this application. By passing tonight, by passing tonight, you're not voting to protect our children. And we really need to protect the children in our daycare center. The amount of extra traffic that's gonna be caused by this and people turning around potentially in our facility is gonna cause safety issues. And we're, we're adamantly concerned about the safety issues of our our parents and our children. Leaving and entering our neighbor, our facility and making sure that we're not attracting. Additional people trying to turn around because the parking lots can put continuing to overflow. And if if this is passed tonight, we will be pursuing this in federal, with a federal U S attorney. To continue to combat this because it's not right, it's just not right, you shouldn't be. Opening a cannabis cannabis distillery within six hundred feet of a of a, of an established. Private daycare center that has houses kids from ages six weeks up to five years old. So, thank you for the time tonight, I appreciate it and I hope you guys make the right decision tonight.
Thank you. All right, is anyone present, yes, in the front row, please.
Mr. versus there, pushing performance, um. I just had a question about, so it's online sales, correct?
It's pre-orders.
Pre-orders, so, did I hear you, maybe just a clarification, did you say that? That some of the stores have gone to over-the-consumer sales already?
Not sure if I'm clear, but. Uh, Amy Sutchen's for the record, yes, I'm aware that there are facilities in Connecticut that have allowed. People to come in without appointment, um, Rick can talk to what. Um, Fine Federal's experience has been so far, but the important part for. The public and the commission that if this application were to be approved, that is not allowed without a return to this commission.
Okay, so they would have, you guys would have to come back for that.
Correct.
So I I guess what my observation is, I, excuse me for putting this. For trying to break it down in the language terms, but, so if I was gonna go to the butcher and get a roast. And I never even bought a roast before, even though I paid for it online, I might ask the butcher. Do I cook this thing with pepper, how do I cook it? So, these people are buying this stuff online, they've probably never had it before, or maybe they're new to it, maybe they're not. How do you know how to gauge how many minutes are gonna take, I mean, there's gonna be an interaction, isn't there? Like, how strong is this stuff, how, how, how many should I take, I've never done this before. I mean, so how do you put this into four minutes, three minutes, I mean, you're not just throwing the package at somebody and throwing them out the door, so. I I get confused with the parking and the the number of minutes per parking place.
Right, so.
So, there's gonna be interaction.
Happy to address. I'm happy to address, however you like.
It's it's our meeting and your your questions come to us and.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And through us.
I'm good.
Through the, to the applicant's representative, so, in in the sense that one has to reply to the other. Um, just remember that we're we're in between.
So, everything is pre-purchased, so if somebody had to talk to you about what they're purchasing, they could call. Before they place an order online, but they're not coming in and browsing because. Per the condition, they will have already placed an order by the time they're arriving at the store. So they will have already selected whatever product it is, and if they had questions about that. That would have done, been done before they're at the store.
Okay, yeah, any, any more questions?
I do have one more question, so. You said you had a vault, I'm gonna imagine you've got some expensive product there, correct? What's legal tender for buying this stuff? Is it cash only, is it, I mean, so. It, because it's not a federal thing, is it cash only, or do you take credit cards, or?
We, I, we discussed this during the last hearing. We, we discussed this during the last hearing, but it is cash and a new debit card, right, Rick?
That's correct.
Oh, well, so my understanding was the federally, federally charged, federally licensed, federal, federal banking systems can't participate in a transaction. So are debit cards, does that mean all debit cards or only some debit cards?
Uh, Rick, do you know?
So the differentiation, no credit cards at all. We have ATMs in all, in all the facilities, so people can come in and get cash.
But you said that debit cards could be used, and my question is, does that include all debit cards or only some debit cards?
I, I would say, I can't say for a fact, I can get information on that, but it's debit card, they're not involved with an FDIC bank. That's the differentiation. So we cannot deal with any FDIC bank. All our banking is done with local state chartered banking.
Okay, so going down that road, there's gonna be a lot of cash transactions and they have a lot of material and product that's worth a lot of money. How do, how do they plan on protecting themselves? Are they gonna have armed people?
Well, see, that's how they operate their business and that's not really a zoning matter. And to that, I would say there, there may still be restaurants even in Old Sabre that don't accept credit cards. You have to pay with cash, so it would be similar to a restaurant.
I'm just wondering if they have armed people there. That's my, where I was going with it, there's cash and it's expensive stuff, there's bad elements to come into rob places. So are your cashier, are their cashiers going to be armed?
That's not zoning.
Okay, but.
There's, there's a lot of issues here and here. Follow the example of, say, Chief Spear there, where he narrowed it down to an address and with the ladies that spoke tonight, talked about the specifics of the address and zoning-related matters other than how they conduct their business aside from zoning. They do tell us in their application that they will conduct their business with regard to zoning matters by regulating the rate of visits and controlling the parking and access to the site. That's what they've told us. Yes, they have told us that, that's the fact. And that the traffic study and the review of the traffic study by two different firms have established that the impact on the local roadways and properties will not be adverse from a traffic engineering standpoint, despite what an individual's experience and opinion might be. That's what we have to work with from the zoning commission's standpoint. And so with the information before us entered into the public record, we have to make a determination. Does it merit being approved as a special exception use under the zoning regulation? Yes, well, before you go again, let's make sure we get, let's make sure we let everyone else who wants to say something again. Yes, in the green.
Hi, Erica, she says, Old Sabre. I do have for the, the commission, when you were counting the parking spots, I went on their website and like, you know, Stanford one particularly, to see what they said. And they also have a pharmacist that they say is on staff. They're actually trying to hire one for Stanford right now because they're in their career. So is, will Sabre have a pharmacist? And when I read more about what the pharmacist does, it's if, if, like Chris said, if you need information, if you've never bought marijuana, you, the pharmacist can guide you in what you need to do. So I don't know if that person is on staff there or if there's a one-eight-hundred Fine Fettle number when you call a specific pharmacist.
Well, that, that again would be how they conduct their business within the confines of the walls that, that you're concerned. It's, it's not a zoning matter. Zoning is the land use.
Well, it is a zoning matter if that pharmacist needs a parking spot to park his or her car in the parking lot to be in the Fine Fettle building in Old Sabre. If, on their website, they're looking for one in Stanford and Manchester, I think. So my, when I read that, I'm thinking, oh, they must be putting a pharmacist in every Fine Fettle building. And I didn't hear anybody up there talk about a pharmacist, a parking spot for a pharmacist. Then the next thing, when you go on the website, under Welcome to Fine Fettle in Stanford again, they do talk about the need, if you need to place an order, they have dedicated greeters available outside to assist you with placing an order. Now, I don't know if Fine Fettle in Stanford has different requirements, but this said on their website, that you can go up and talk to the greeter about what you want to purchase. And then, so I don't know if you guys have looked at their website.
The, the zoning commission is restricted to information that's entered into the record during the open public hearing. And during the last public hearing, I listened to the recording and I heard mention of Stanford and their operational procedures and that they didn't have traffic issues at that location using their parking management activities there. I did not go to a website because we're not allowed to seek out additional information on our own and incorporate that into the decision-making process. Because that, that's called ex parte communication stuff. And we can't talk to people in the grocery store about it. We have to only take what's submitted during the public hearing. And insofar as your questions regarding the operation that has to do with zoning and land use and special exception application, they're appreciated questions. But how they maneuver their people inside the building and where the ATM was on the floor plan, but beyond that, it doesn't matter. That's not zoning. And so whether there's a pharmacist on, in the building or not, that's not zoning. Just, if there is a pharmacist, does it count as an employee? Well, to me, it would be one of the eight or if it's not one of the eight onsite employees, perhaps that, what, where the traffic engineers tell us, there are three additional parking spaces to accommodate that. Either way, it doesn't, it wouldn't provide a reason for a zoning commissioner to say that's not approvable. That's, the commission is looking for reasons to either support compliance with the regulations or reasons to say that it didn't comply with the regulations and that would mean it, it's not approvable. That's how it works.
Why, thank you. I just, I guess I'm listening back here and I hear everybody talking about cash register people and you're counting like five cash registers, one greeter, one, and I'm thinking, oh, no one mentioned the pharmacist. So like, so in your count, that's what I'm saying. That, that's why I brought it up. And on the final note, the EDC, I'm, I'm so sorry, I didn't get your name, but the EDC did deny the.
We, we have their letter.
Yeah, she, she had asked, she wasn't sure if that was true, so. And you had, didn't mention it. So I'm just saying that that was, it was denied on the second.
Go through. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note for the record that Ms. Cessenza is a member of the EDC and she had not noted that, so I just wanted to note that so it was clear to the members of the commission if you weren't.
Yes, you're not supposed to represent another commission when you take the plan.
Thank you, sir. Thank God.
All right, here, anybody else in the room in the back, please? Please state your name for the record.
Bruce Minor, Boston Post for Old Sabre, a long time president of Old Sabre. My business right now is fairly close to where this is proposed. Due to traffic standards, it's, like, keeps apparent that it's not the right place for it. Right in my neighborhood, you've got the former Knights of Columbus building. The Ecuadorians play volleyball there, they have their kids there. That adds to the kids with the daycare up the street. You're coming off a sixty-five mile an hour highway to thirty-five mile an hour two-lane road, going under an underpass by what Briar, Briar Cliff, for those who don't know, is the residence up on Hill, past the motel. When you come to the corner, it used to be a yield sign, became a stop sign. Again, nobody stops. Even if you spent two hundred thousand dollars to reconfigure that corner, it's not a good spot for it to go in and out. You've got businesses there. I don't want to see any of the businesses fail because of, they can't get into places. I actually worked in one of the largest auto auctions in the state of Connecticut, Barrett-Jackson. So I know a lot about parking, okay? Sometimes people do what they're told. Other times, it's like herding cats. They don't follow directions. The person who's at the door checking IDs, it's like going into a bar. You can't be checking on the parking lot to see what's going on in the parking lot and covering the door at the same time. It just doesn't work. It's not the right place. I'll say it over and over again. You know, there's, there's plenty of other places in Sabre that it's not gonna affect neighborhoods. You've got people, you know, you talk about LAZ parking. They gotta park somewhere. They gotta park somewhere to unload. Are they gonna park in my driveway? Are they gonna park in the, in the parking lot that is now currently the former Knights of Columbus building? Are they gonna park in Chris's Ocean Performance and walk across the street? Are they gonna park down, down his dirt road that goes down behind the houses there? I grew up in the neighborhood. I can name off every single house that was in that neighborhood. Not the right place for it.
Okay, anyone else online raising hand? Please, if you have comments to make, let's stick to zoning-related matters that have not already been brought up.
It looks like Chief.
You got a phone number there?
No, Chief Spear.
An HTO number ending in, what's that?
One forty-four.
Yeah.
Forty-four, one forty-four.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just real quickly, I'm hearing a lot about the Laz parking or a private vendor to help with parking. I do want the zoning commission to understand very clearly that those folks are not allowed to step foot on Route One, nor are they allowed to do anything on private pri- property that would impede the traffic flow of Route One. So I don't want any of the members to think, hey, they're gonna have this parking authority, everything's gonna run great in the parking lot. There's only so much real estate and Route One has to flow. And those folks do not have the statutory authority to step foot onto Route One to tell Route One traffic what to do, let alone to direct traffic in or out of that parking lot. So I just want to make sure that that is abundantly clear.
Great. Okay, thanks. Anyone else in the room wishing to speak? Yes. Right, Cessenza, Old Sabre. I, I just, I questioned the number of employee IDs running this business at eight with five cash registers, somebody in the parking lot, as was discussed before, and we talked about fifteen. But we didn't discuss what is lunch hour or break because these people are gonna need some type of, there's gonna have to be an elite person there. A lot of these people are holding on breaks. That's what it turned out. Yeah, yes.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Jacqueline Nittol. I'm wondering how, what timeframes did they check the traffic flow? Was that in like November?
That's, it's in the traffic report.
June, July, August?
You want, you want one of these?
I thought one.
It's in there. We have both. There, there you go. We have the original from the applicant, the SLR traffic report, traffic impact assessment letter. He stated December thirteenth. And then subsequent to that, we also have a response from a separate traffic consultant, H and H, if you want to look at that. And that has all the traffic information that the commission has already reviewed and it's in their reports. And so if you have anything in addition to the, the two traffic reports that we've already considered, then, then, then you can bring that up. But we've, we've done the homework. We've read the reports. Where's the H and H? I have the H and H. I mean, you may have written some notes on there. Yeah.
I have notes on the line.
All right, there's, yeah, can you divide that one to her, please, also?
Absolutely.
I marked up. Right. January tenth copy from H and H. All right, anyone else online raising hands?
Yes, I have.
All right, allowed to talk. That's, what's that, number two fifty-five?
Yeah.
Hi, can you hear me? JT?
Go. Yes.
Hi, I think, I want to thank the commission again for the time that they're spending on this. I just had a couple of questions to the commission. Are they allowed to park on the property outside of the parking spots?
It's JT Dunn. I didn't get that.
Could you, could you ask that again?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Are they allowed to park on the property outside of the parking spots?
No more so than any other business in town has parking that, that would do that. That's the same for everybody there. Did you, did you catch, did you catch any? Okay, go.
So, so you know, if they, if people park around back in the grass and work there all day, not in a parking spot, that's permitted or not permitted?
That's not part of the application and it would not, it would not be what would be a permission if they got one. It would not be the permit. So that would be.
So should they have, so in the course of regular business, they have more than eight employees, regardless of what their job title is, they're, you know, the LAZ be parking, which I, I find it funny that they would, they would put all of them into a van and drive them to Newington when they have over a hundred parking spots. But, but anyway, i- i- if there are more than eight employees between LAZ, pharmacist, cash register guy, boss, everybody, and they're, they start off as nine, ten, eleven people working and then there's more people on site than are allowed and everything, and it becomes, they're operating outside of what zoning is allowed. What is the process to mitigate that for the neighbors to complain to zoning and what's the process of zoning to bring them back into compliance?
We have our zoning enforcement officer, Chris Costa, here to try to address the, the question of enforcement. Go ahead, Chris.
So every day, people make zoning complaints about things that people are doing that they're not supposed to and it's my job to resolve them, whether it's a cease and desist order or a phone call. So you would complain to me.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And you do a great job for the town. And if I understood what they said earlier, all the other Fine Fettle sites in Connecticut are already doing walk-ins that are not by appointment?
Rick, can you confirm whether we're aware we might be allowing walk-ins?
Currently, when customers come up to the location based on being greeted by the greeter because we've seen over the last four to five weeks less traffic coming through. And again, we're still up at this point using traffic management. We've had no problems allowing people come in because there's no one queuing up where they can't get into dispensary because the registers are open, the traffic can come in and go out and flow freely. So there's, there's been something that we didn't do upfront, but over the last week or two, have been able to have a few people come in that did not place an order online. I emphasize, we would not do, can I finish, please?
Absolutely.
We were not gonna do that in Old Sabre. And we can't do that in Old Sabre without coming back for an approval to do walk-ins. And that's part of the stipulation in the zoning regulations that we will adhere to.
Right, so the answer is yes. In all your other locations, you're allowing walk-ins within a couple of weeks of opening up where you did not allow it when you started. But Old Sabre, you would have to go back to zoning to do it. So if somebody was to walk in and have a great excuse as to why they couldn't do it online and buy off, buy off the counter, that would be a, that would be against the zoning rules for Old Sabre? And that would be a complaint?
We have never heard a provision of buying off the counter.
Or whatever it is. In other words, a non-scheduled appointment where they pre-purchased it. That's not allowed in Old Sabre unless you allow it, correct?
No, but they've described a check-in procedure. And if you haven't had a, if you don't happen to have a pre-sale appointment, then basically your question boils down to what happens if someone, someone shows up without an appointment or a pre-sale?
Mr. Chairman, the greeter will talk to that person if they do not have an online order. They will give them a small card with a QR code. They will give them a small card with a QR code that they can then take and leave the premise and place an order and come back at a scheduled time when there's an opening for them to come in. They will not
As long as they have a computer or a phone. Yep.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to comment and I'm being interrupted.
Any comments?
No, I, I let Mr. Herbert finish his statement, but I do think that if it didn't finish without the interruption, that would be helpful. But I don't know if he has anything further.
All right, anyone else in the room have comments in favor of or in opposition to the application? And we'll go back online, any more hands raised?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, there's no one.
Without one there?
No, that's the same, that's JT. It's the same.
Then, okay.
We're done.
All right, then, are there any additional information that required by the committee members in order to deliberate on this matter when that time comes? We don't have any outstanding referrals, we don't have any additional questions. The only input that we can accept outside of this part, this public hearing would be through staff. That would include the zoning enforcement officer and our attorney, for instance, so. Can, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing regarding this application. Oh, there's always one more. That's current experience.
If I could just have just a couple of quick minutes to answer a few questions that I do think are relevant to what you, what was raised by the public and just a couple of concluding comments.
Okay.
Very, I will be very brief. I think a couple of important ones with respect to our ability or even the fact that we would change the numbers and somehow manipulate the data and number of sales we have on what we've reported during the last hearing and would be what is available to Chris is the information that we're providing to the state of Connecticut with respect to sales. It's reported, as we said, by hour. So Chris would be very easily, it'd be very easy for Chris to come in and ask for that data, actually even have it emailed to her. And so what the accusation is, is that we'd be manipulating the data that we're submitting to the state of Connecticut. So certainly, we're not going to jeopardize our state license in order to do that. Important consideration, Stanford is a hybrid facility, there is a pharmacist on duty because there is a medical component, there is no medical component proposed here. Certainly, we understand with respect to Laz parking that they are not allowed to direct traffic on Route One. Newington Store is located on the Burlington Pike, so we're certainly familiar with being located on a state road and what Laz works on much larger facilities and certainly is aware of its limitation. And then just to refresh everybody's recollection and ask the, answer the question from the public, the traffic information was conducted in mid-two thousand twenty-two. One of the comments incorporated or raised by H and H with respect to the last application was some August data. So all of that was accounted for and the summer traffic and particularly weekend traffic. There was a question that H and H had raised. We incorporated that record, so all of that is available factored in there. So I think with respect to those questions, I think we, you're very clear about what we are proposing. And then I think the, the one thing that I wanted to address in conclusion is that you've heard a lot of basically disbelief about how we're going to operate, about our willingness to comply with state and local regulations, laws included. And I think what that comes down to is frankly, something that happens in zoning a lot. It's speculation, it's worry, it's generalized concerns, particularly with the use that's new to a community. And certainly, there's been no information that's been submitted to you that would constitute what's called substantial evidence. The basis on which you can deny an application and have that decision supported needs to be based on site-specific substantial evidence and concerns about what might happen to somebody's property values, concerns about what might happen to somebody's business, whether somebody would sell their property. None of that, as affirmed by the Connecticut Supreme Court, actually is recently, is not quite a year ago, went through a case very similar to this where there was a lot of concern by nearby businesses, that their businesses would be impacted, a lot of concern about, well, maybe my employees will quit, things like that. And the Connecticut Supreme Court affirmed that, all of that without actual concrete evidence of the financial impact in particular on people is, is just speculative. Even when people go as far as listing their properties for sale based on the proposed use, the court found that that was not substantial evidence. I think what will, what you would find here is that this is a business that is, again, a legal use for adults that choose to partake. We're not selling to children, we're not doing anything different than, and frankly, more regulated than a liquor store, as I, I think I described in the, in the last application. And I think the last point that I would like to make is that there's been a lot of discussion about the fact that the, whether it was employee turnover or more importantly, customer turnover. And I want you to think about all the things that you go about in your day-to-day business. We've been questioned that, how are we gonna get people in in ten minutes and out? And people are gonna linger somehow, that's not gonna be possible. But I think if you think about, you stop and you get gas, you are in and out of the gas station in well under ten minutes. If you preorder a pizza and you go pick it up, you're well, you're in and out of a restaurant in less than ten minutes. And so I think there are, there's a concern about this particular use because it's new, but it's not new to the industry, as you've heard over the course of the public hearing and even in the wider news over the last couple of weeks. The rollout has been smooth, there's been a lot of information gathered from the states that have allowed it over the years. And we do think that we are able to operate this facility in accordance with the conditions that we propose. You have all of those and obviously we agree to the ones we discussed at the beginning of the meeting tonight. And I do think that this will be a successful and business for Old Sabre with, despite the lack of consensus on this round of the economic development, it does have economic benefits for the town of Old Sabre and will be a positive benefit. I think this, this notion that there might be, we're gonna attract the wrong crowd or somehow be impactful is just, again, based on concerns and worries that are unfounded. So with that, if there are no other questions, again, I'll thank you for your time and ask if you approve the application.
Any questions?
We have one more hand raised.
One, one more raised hand? That's it, that's one forty-four again?
Yeah, Chief Spar. Chief Spar. We just need to get
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much for entertaining, just one final comment. I appreciate what, what counsel's doing, she's a fantastic representative for, for her client. But, you know, I want to bring this back to Old Sabre. This isn't a pizza restaurant, this isn't a gas station. I think as residents of the town of Old Sabre, we can all agree that two thirty-three Boston Post Road is no spot for a successful business with high customer turnover. There are plenty of spots in Old Sabre that perhaps this business would be appropriate for, that I could have no concrete opinions about other than to say, yeah, that fits into the retail scope. There's traffic lights and parking spaces and sidewalks. But in the case of two thirty-three Boston Post Road, that does not exist. There isn't a citizen in the town of Old Sabre that would think that putting a business that's successful with a high customer turnover at two thirty-three Boston Post Road would be a good idea so close to the intersection of Route One and Springbrook Road. You are all Old Sabre citizens, you have all lived in town for a very long time like I have, and I'm sure you can agree that that is no spot for a successful business with high customer turnover. If it was, it would be there already. And so tonight, the application in front of you, the amended application, although referred to several times, the first application tonight, you're looking at that amended application, it's still for that same parcel, two thirty-three Boston Post Road. It would be negligent to allow a successful business with high customer turnover rate to go in there, despite the nature of the business. And so I would ask that the zoning commission respectfully deny this application because it is unsafe and negligent to allow that business to operate there. Thank you.
Thanks for your input. Make a motion to close public hearing on this matter. This application from fine fettle cannabis or special exception use, twenty-six hundred square feet retail recreational marijuana dispensary, fourteen hundred square feet vacant space and a thousand square foot storage above. At two thirty-three Boston Post Road, the surface map forty-four lot eleven in the business B four district. Is there a second to closing public hearing? Justin Turbilly seconds a motion to close, any discussion on the motion to close public hearing? None appearing, all those in favor of closing public hearing signify by saying aye. One, aye, one, two, three, four, five in favor of the motion, none opposed, no intentions, motion to close public hearing carries. Do we wish to deliberate on this this evening? Or do we wish to assemble our thoughts and organize any conditions or stipulations or, or reasons behind a potential motion? For a next meeting? Yes, no, maybe?
So you currently have a draft motion, you have two public hearings scheduled for your next hearing in addition to your deliberation and your workshop?
The way the process goes, the public hearing is closed, we have everything that we can use for our deliberations. We have how many days to deliberate? From after the close of the public hearing?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five days. We can't, we can use up to sixty-five days to vote on this. So we don't have to do it tonight. Thanks for coming out, thanks for patience. It's, it is what it is. But, and the commission now has to consider all that we have and digest that in terms of whether we wish to approve or deny a special exception to this evidence. So I'm asking the commissioners, without taking a vote here of either one way or another, if you wish to deliberate on this this evening, or do you wish to prepare and deliberate and make a decision at a future meeting? Tonight? Tonight? Tonight, and, tonight, all right. So we can deliberate on this now or we could finish our, oh, the agenda. The next public hearing was postponed by the request of the applicant. So the only other thing on the agenda this evening would be our workshop. Okay, so we're gonna be here for both of them either way. So if we do this now, well, this would make sense, all right. So we can deliberate on this fine fettle application, we can. We may or may not come to a motion tonight, but we will begin deliberating, okay? With regard to this application, what are your thoughts, what do you think? We've reviewed the input from the public, we've reviewed the input from the traffic engineers, from the referrals, and we've, we've got fresh plans, a different application from before, and yet remember that the entirety of the earlier application was part of the public record. So if you're referring to that earlier application, yes, we can do that, it's in the public record. But just make sure that you have a distinction between differences between the two applications, the earlier one and this one. All right, that's, that's the way I, that's the way that I would see it. If there is going to be a motion for approval, they would have to contain conditions of approval, including all of those that the applicant provides in their statement of, statement of use, plus additional conditions of approval regarding front landscaped area, street trees, light poles, and and, and anything else that we, we could carry to list. If there's a, a motion for denial, then there would have to be reasons given for the denial. It's just, at this point, the commission can't just say no, or you can't just say yes. There have to be some supporting reasoning to go with that, okay? So I've collected, and if there's a motion for, so there's a motion for approval and it does not pass, it's a non-approval and there are no approval results, that's what happened last time. If there's a motion for denial and the motion for denial is carried, then there's a denial. But if a motion for denial does not carry, the vote does not, doesn't support it, then what do you have? You don't have an approval. You have a, a non-approval of a denial is not very useful. So at this point, based on our prior experience, it would seem that a motion to approve would make more sense because that's what we did before. And if it's, if it's approved, then it's, it's approved. If it's not approved, then there is no approval, so that's more clear cut. So with regard to a motion for approval and conditions, there's a lot of them. So we have the conditions that were brought up on the motion for approval for the earlier application. And they run about two pages. The conditions enumerated on page two require the applicant to apply for the encroachment permit for the installation of sidewalk on the entire frontage of Boston Post Road and Springbrook Road. And a condition of the approval before and for this one, if the applicant makes an application for the sidewalks as condition, they should also consider an application for an additional curb cut on a portion of the property on the that north, northern side of the, northeastern side of the wetlands for additional parking. At some point in, in, they should make that an application as part, a condition for, for this application approval if there is one. And any spaces in that triangular area shall be for employees only. Hours of operational be as stated. All sales are online sales, pre-sales or by appointment. They will be pre-sales and they will be by appointment only. No walk-in purchases. No more than eight employees. As the applicant recognized this evening, that would be the upper limit. The applicant will provide a parking management plan. And it may or may not involve LAZ as part of their statement of use. The applicant's statement of use exhibit B, conditions of approval. Item number three, parking management plan. If, if their conditions of approval is adjusted and made, but made, but it's not required to include options such as use of a parking attendant. I would say that upon an opening and for a reasonable period thereafter, that they should have a parking attendant on site and/or a third-party operator such as LAZ parking. To the extent that the employees are number eight or fewer, they should be provided parking on site. If they park elsewhere, that's up to them. All interior space shall be identified as storage on the floor plans. Storage is the term that we use in our zoning regulation, vacant is not, is not a use or a space inside the building. The applicant has depicted possible modifications in intersection of Springbrook Road and Boston Post Road. The conceptual intersection improvement plan dated August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. If the town of Old Sabre pursues approval of the modification of the intersection with the state DOT, the applicant agrees to support the proposal and to contribute up to fifty thousand dollars for the cost of that improvement within thirty days from notification by the town to the applicant that an approval came from the DOT. The applicant will operate the facility within the terms described during this application process. Any further modifications would be reapplication or special exception modification to this commission.
Uh. Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Should we go through this line by line because I know you're going through your comments, but there might be, I think there's other comments from other commissioners.
I know, yeah.
I know it's a little painful to go line by line, but I think that's the only way I'm gonna be able to.
You have, alright.
To capture it, I, I'm just, I, I'm being honest because I, I'm not keeping up. Sorry, I just. If we're.
How, how do you want it to go, you want the?
Well, the draft resolution that was presented by Fine Fettle was reviewed.
Yes.
By myself at our turn.
Oh, okay.
So if that's what you wanna use, but I know there's been comments about amendments. I would need to know what you would want to amend, such as adding things maybe in the end about changing the gravel parking area. To a landscaped area.
So of the, all the things that I have already mentioned, they're included in, in your.
Not all of them because you added some tonight and without going line by line and I know. I, I'm confident there might be some other comments. For the motion, I hate to do line by line, but I think that's the only way if we're gonna get through the.
Put together a, a bulleted list, if you will, of conditions for um incorporation into the motion and record. And that's a complicating factor that. If we try to do that this evening, that will take a while to, to do that, to be part of the formal motion. Right?
So I have the draft motion.
You have a draft motion for approval for updated.
January tenth.
Hmm?
January tenth was.
January tenth. Alright, that, that's newer than your, the, than the some previous motion, draft motion for approval, okay, go, go with the one you have.
Does everybody have January tenth?
Mine's December first.
No, I don't have a January tenth, I don't have that hard copy.
Mine is all marked up, does anyone have a clean January tenth? It's all marked up. Everything's all marked up.
No.
Uh, sorry, I can go and print that upstairs. Sarah's gonna go print those motions, do you wanna continue the other matters and then return back for this?
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Can we do that? I said, wanna, wanna go, but. Come back to this?
Then we can come back to the move on while she's making copies.
And then we'll just come back.
Come back to it after we do the next. Agenda item, are we not allowed to do that?
We have to.
Make a motion to.
Modify the agenda.
Yeah, why don't we just wait till she gets that, and then she has to take the minutes.
Like, maybe the.
So do you want me to start and read the preamble?
Yes.
To get us through the first page?
Yes, please read the preamble for the draft motion to approve that you and Matt Willis.
No, this is prepared by the applicant.
Oh, prepared by the.
And given to the commission in the last basis. This is the January tenth. Version, so that seems to be the issue.
That, and that's, yeah. Okay, read that.
Draft resolution. The commission finds that the proposal satisfies the special exception standards. In section fifty-two point six as well as a, as well as a definition of cannabis dispensary previously approved established by section fifty-three point one and the requirements of. Section thirty-four point two point sixteen, because the site plan approval was issued on August sixth, two thousand and eighteen for a medical cannabis dispensary facility. The lot size is unchanged from that application and the proposed use is adult retail sales. In connection with the initial application for the facility, the commission requested a peer review of the applicant's traffic analysis to confirm there would be no adverse impact. To the surrounding intersections and street network. The commission's peer reviewer Hardesty at Hanover confirmed the traffic analysis was conducted in accordance with industry standards relied upon. The traffic Institute of Traffic Engineers Manual for Cannabis Facilities accounted for site-specific conditions such as sight lines and roadway speeds. The commission's initial denial was based upon parking capacity and circulation concerns about the flow of vehicles within the site itself. The floor area proposed for the dispensary use is thirty-five percent less than the earlier layout and the number of employees necessary to run the business is approximately half the number reflected in the prior application. Eight employees in the current application versus fifteen to twenty-three in the prior application. With the reduction in the size of the facility and inability to utilize the remaining space. In the building without further permission approval, the commission finds a proposal is consistent with the medical dispensary use and the site can now give. Support. To the number of vehicles that will need to circulate and park. On the site in any given time. Therefore, the commission finds that the proposed cannabis dispensary facility adult use. Is a retail use in ongoing, in, in onsite parking complies with section sixty-two point four point six D of the zoning regulations for retail uses, including designation of employee parking. Hardesty and Hanover's review of the applicant's revised parking analysis supports this finding. Because this is a new use, the commission wants to ensure there is no impact to nearby properties during the grand opening period and deems a parking management plan. To be an effective tool to manage peak demand, particularly now that the retail sales have begun throughout the state. The commission therefore finds with. The parking management proposed by the applicant peak to man parking and the movement of vehicles can also be handled on the site without adverse impact to the surrounding roads or property. Additionally, the traffic review notes. The proposed development would not generate the need for any road or intersection improvements, however, the applicant. Will fund intersection improvements at Spring Brook Road and Boston Post Road as required by the town and permitted by the state of Connecticut D O T. The security measures proposed by the applicant, including secured doors and numerous security cameras on the interior and exterior of the building, as well as the prohibition on loitering onsite consumption. And underage access are sufficient to address any concerns about public safety and public health. The commission acknowledges numerous public comments about recreational cannabis in Old Sabre. While a moratorium was in place, the commission spent nearly a year evaluating which cannabis users should be allowed and conducted. A formal public hearing during which very limited comment was received. The commission made the determination that retail recreational dispensaries should be permitted in two specific locations based upon the use being. Allowed by the Connecticut laws and previously issued approvals, one of which was for this property. So right now we are on page two halfway down. Um. Right of love conditions. The commission further acknowledges that the proposal received positive referrals from. It did, I'm a second. From the. Further acknowledge that the proposal received positive referral from. The planning commission. We'll just leave it at that. So pretty much the first page and a half is a summary. And then. The second half of page two starts getting into a condition. So if you wanna go through the conditions one by one, it would be helpful for me who has to put this. Into some type of a. Or Sarah and I, and some type, well, I mean, this is kind of. Sorry, condition one. The hours of operation shall be Sunday through Saturday nine to eight.
I would, I'd rather see the hours of operation will be. Instead of directly.
We don't use shall, we use will.
So throughout this, the conditions would change, shall to. Okay.
Wherever you see shall, change it to will.
Condition two. All sales will be pre-sales with pickup by appointment only, there will be no more than five appointments per ten-minute period. The applicant will make transactional data by hour and day of the week available to the zoning staff upon request. To confirm compliance with the condition. So jump in if you have any. Three. The applicant will prepare a parking management plan to ensure the orderly flow of parking onsite and entering. Slash exiting the facility. This plan. May, but is not required to include operations such as use of a parking attendant, involvement of a third parking. Parking operator such as L A Z parking and off-site employee parking. The plan will be reviewed by the zoning commission staff for determination of consistency with the terms of the approach.
I would want that to be uh. Required. Um. Parking attendant.
What line are we on?
During, during, during an initial period of operation. They can propose. Four weeks or whatever time period, and whatever time period that is would establish. The benchmark. For how it operates. And if it's necessary to continue. The parking attendant, so it, it should say. It in.
So should it say this plan may include operations such as use of a parking attendant, involvement of a third parking operator such as. L A Z parking. And off-site, so should that say?
For an initial, initial four, an initial four weeks of, of, after opening. To be revisited. As necessary.
Okay.
Ultra, we, we should require that plan X amount of time prior to opening, sixty days, ninety days, or some timeframe.
Oh, oh, be the hour before they open?
Yes, in other words, if they're gonna open June first, I want to have that parking plan sixty days prior to.
Oh, with the, no, the parking plan is to be reviewed by the zoning commission staff for a determination of consistency.
All, all of these things have to be completed before I sign off on the certificate of zoning.
But you wanna be able to review it in sufficient time.
Oh.
Prior to that, so.
They would, they would have to before they.
So for example, if you require an auto turn by the fire department. They have to get all this together and give me time to do it, it's not like they're just gonna say approve it today.
Am I gonna get it sixty days prior to their opening so we can review it, that's my.
Oh, so you're asking them to return to the zoning commission?
Yes, I'm, no, not, not return, I wanna see the parking plan prior, sixty days prior to their opening.
So here, so what you wanna do is mod- modify the words of the condition, the plan will be. Reviewed by the zoning commission staff and the zoning commission. For a determination of consistency with the terms of this approval.
Does it need to?
Prior to, prior, prior to, prior to open?
He's saying the staff, yeah, that's what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't have it, have it on the private commission, it should just be reviewed by staff.
He wants to see it.
You wanna, you, I would wanna see it. The parking, the parking plan?
Says, the, the, the plan should be reviewed by the zoning commission staff and the zoning commission. For a determination of consistency with the terms of this approval.
That's what it says.
Since it's a plan, the plan will be reviewed by zoning commission staff for a determination of consistency with the terms of approval. So the proposed change is the plan will be reviewed by the zoning commission for a determination of consistency. Within the terms of this approval, at least sixty-five days prior. To opening.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm not arguing, I just have to word it, I just.
I thought when you said you wanted the parking attendant there before.
No, 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 I wanna see the plan prior to them opening, that's, that's, that's.
Pardon me, but I thought you meant that you wanted the parking attendant there prior to opening at nine A M.
No, no.
That you wanted the parking attendant here, you want the parking attendant there before they open at nine A M, so, but.
I wanna review the.
I understand what you really meant, but initially, and I think it might be worth noting, that the parking, parking attendant could be there before they open at nine A M.
I agree.
Alright, now we're still on number three because now the modification you started making. Where it says the. We had the plan. May include options such as use of parking attendant involvement, a third-party operator such as. L A Z parking and off-site employee parking, is this still for the initial four weeks after opening as Bob suggested, or we're just leaving it blank?
Right, we have in our regulations no provision for such a retail operation to have any kind of off-site employee, any kind of off-site parking. Therefore, I would recommend. Eliminating those words from the condition number three where it says and off-site employee parking. We have no regulations which would allow for such. Um, parking off-site.
So then it would be this plan may include options such as use of parking attendant involvement of a third parking parking operator.
Such as L A Z parking period.
Okay, so you had said that. You wanted language for the initial four weeks after open. Is that to be added on before we got into discussion of the sixty-five days? What am I doing with the four weeks?
Yeah, because leave it in because then you see how it's actually working. It's like.
But the four weeks is related to having a parking attendant.
Yeah.
So it didn't stipulate the difference, it's not that the parking plan is in place for four weeks. It is there's an attendant there for four weeks.
Right, and I think, Bob, did you mean that after the four weeks? You wanted the option to be able to review to continue? The, the, the onsite parking attendant, if necessary, right, yeah.
So they're gonna return to the commission?
Hmm?
So they're gonna return to the commission? So you're gonna approve a parking plan?
Yes.
That's no later than sixty-five days after opening? And then you're saying. You're gonna have the initial four weeks. You're gonna use options of the parking attendant involvement or third party, so what happens, I'm just being hypothetical. What happens if in a week there's no parking issues? They wait to come to your next meeting to remove?
Well, do we, I, I just.
The parking attendant and anyone.
I picked four weeks out of the air figuring it should all well be sorted out. After four weeks. If you think it could be sorted out in less time, how do we word that in terms of? Length of presence of. Parking.
So why don't you just word that when you discuss the initial parking plan? And make that determination. And just cut the, the four, I mean, I think the four weeks, it's just to set in stone, we don't know, so what if you have four weeks in it? You, they need it for six weeks, I think. Alright, so we're just gonna leave that as. Alright, number four. All interior space identified as storage on the floor plan. Prepared by La Ark Architects dated November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two shall remain vacant.
Will.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to, I was doing pretty good there for a while.
It'll work through a word search, whenever you find shall, change it to will.
No expansion of the dispenser used nor any other change of user tenant. Or tenant occupancy will be allowed. Without prior approval by the zoning commission.
Right. Why, why wouldn't we give them approval? If it's a non-conformity?
It's not a non-conformity, it's. How often do we approve vacant space, so it's kind of.
The applicant is not the owner of the property. The applicant told us tonight that they have control over all of the interior space. And it would be used as they described.
Okay.
The owner of the property. Might think something differently, but this precludes that.
I thought that they were the owner of the property.
Yeah, well, Sisypus. The, the property, well, who, whoever owns it. If we look on, on, well, our agenda is not the most reliable item of all, but. Um. It just says applicant and agent. The uh agenda does specify the property owner, but. I think in the earlier application, the owner may have been identified.
So we can just leave.
On, on the, well, let me put it.
So we leave number four the way that it is?
Yeah, yeah, on the application material submitted. The property survey map and site development plan is identified as Sisypus in court, uh, L L C.
Alright, number five. Reads currently, but I already have modifications for you. The applicant will install sidewalks along the frontage of the property on both the Boston Post Road and Springbrook Road. If the installation of sidewalk is not permitted. By the Connecticut Department of Transportation, this commission will be Dean Boyd. Well, okay, the, so the, just to go through, I know. I had had a comment from. One of the commission members just saying, what do we need if the installation of sidewalk is not permitted, then it'll be Dean Boyd. And then you made comments, so if it said the applicant will install sidewalks along the frontage of the property on both Boston Post Road and Springbrook Road.
I have, I, I have a.
The gravel area.
Condition that's related to that, but I don't want to mess up the numbering.
So wait, so just if we added to that. The gravel area along the frontage by Springbrook Road. By the sidewalk.
It's not gravel, it's really dirt.
Well, it's called gravel driveway on the site plan?
Where? Where is the gravel?
Closest to Justin.
I know, I know where the turnout is, but it's not gravel, it's dirt.
Well, it's called gravel.
Well, anyway, alright, go the. Label those gravel. Yeah, but that's. That's at the very corner, this, this turnout is not at the very corner. Alright, so I'm not talking about the part of the plans that label gravel parking. I'm talking about the. Property street line on Springbrook Road. That has. A. An unpaved turnout.
Which. I'm on the same page. Where?
Yeah, I've noted to the applicant this evening that it was not shown as required on the plans, but it couldn't exist in condition on the property.
But isn't this it?
I don't think it's that far north.
So do you, this part here. And the triangle.
Yeah. At the northern.
Which is gravel, would you want that grass too? The sidewalk's gonna.
The whole twenty five foot front landscaped area from the property line inward should be landscaped. The attorney could then agree to that.
So the dirt area that's not once by the catch. And the gravel parking area on their property and in the right of way when they go through to put the sidewalk in.
On, on the, in the R O, in the R O W, yeah.
You don't want to do landscape or do anything in here, where it's gravel? That's what I, I. Right.
The entire, the, the sidewalk will be in the right of way if the DOT grants on the encroachment permit. With or without the sidewalk, the attorney should agree to what, put the. Twenty five foot landscape, front landscape area along the entire property line.
And that'll extend through the gravel area.
Yes.
I'm just being clear because you're referring. To what you marked up on your plan. Which is in marked up on everybody else's plan, so I want to be clear when we write it.
No one else has that, so let's just put it in words and say. Whether or not the sidewalk will be permitted by DOT. The front landscaped area twenty five foot distance from street line into the property will be landscaped. Along. The entire street line of Springbrook Road.
A Boston Post in Springbrook.
Right.
Bob, a Boston Post in Springbrook, correct?
They have it on their plans as meeting the regulations of twenty five feet on the Boston Post roadside. All the way up to where there's no disturbance of vegetation in the wetlands area. And so what I'm saying is that. Along the Springbrook Road, clearly Springbrook Road, not Route one. There will be landscaping in the twenty five foot front landscaped area along, along the street line of Springbrook Road. Including the requisite street trees. Got agreement from the applicant regarding front landscaped area and street trees. This evening.
And to make sure we're all on the same page. Alright, so are we done with condition five?
Yes.
Condition six, the applicant has depicted modifications to the intersection of Springbrook Road and Boston Post Road on a drawing entitled conceptual intersection improvement plan prepared by S L R consulting. Dated August twenty six, twenty twenty two. In the event the town of. Old Sabre pursues approval of this modification with the DOT, the applicant agrees to support the town's proposal of contribute up to fifty thousand towards the cost. Of that improvement. Payment should be made within thirty days from notification by the town to the applicant. The DOT has approved the modification.
Question on that. Who decides?
The town.
Out who? When?
Selectmen.
How can we ensure that that happens?
It's their permit.
No, but I'm just to say, it says if the town decides to pursue it.
We'll have to be involved by a selectman. To pursue it. I believe.
Can, can we somehow?
Requested.
Put an agenda to do that for them to look at that somehow? I think that's a worthwhile thing to pursue because that intersection is terrible. I think we all know that, and if we can somehow. Promote this, it's to our advantage, it's to the town's advantage. That's just my.
I, I don't, I don't think fifty thousand dollars is going to probably.
I understand that, I understand.
It was, it was clear to me, the applicant was sensitive to the zoning commission requiring offsite improvements. To the extent that the commission can. Condition an approval to something like this which the applicant has provided. Via their traffic report, that's as far as we can go. So we'll take whatever we can get. So I, I think the condition is, goes the way it is.
Yeah, good, yeah, it's just a point from step forward, how do we go forward and that's, that's beyond this, and I understand that.
I don't think we. Don't think we can.
We could fix that tonight to get it magically approved, it would be very hard. Alright, sec, are we done with six?
Yep.
Seven, the applicant will operate the facility in accordance with the terms of these conditions. The applicant may apply to modify any operational condition, including hours of operation and limitations regarding the method of sales. And of the maximum number of appointments or the florary condition set forth in condition four. Any such applicant, application. Will include information regarding parking operations and transactional data to support such modification.
That's like, of course they will, yes, that's. You don't get, you know, you've got a choice on that one.
Alright, what else? That's what we had to start with, what other conditions?
Oh, one more thing, update the ADA parking signs, they have the old. And light poles. Light fixtures.
Alright, well, that's one at a time, so the applicant is to update. Current. Signage. ADA compliant.
Number eight.
Signage, that would be number eight.
And they need to have light poles.
Alright, so number nine.
In the.
Light poles.
Light poles in their parking.
Do you want those set on a timer to be shut off later than one hour after you pose?
And the light poles have to conform to the. Limits of the regulation.
Do you want to review those when you review the proposal for the? Operation plan? Or do you want me to send those to A R V? I'm just trying to see how you want to.
I have to say yes, since you asked a question.
So you want to.
The, the, the zoning commission staff should review. Light poles. Insulation for compliance.
Alright, that's condition nine.
Right.
Any additional condition?
Okay, that, that works. Alright, so we're back. I would make a motion to approve the application for fine cattle cannabis. Special exception use. At two thirty three Boston Post Road. Especially map forty four lot eleven in the B four district. With the nine conditions. We went through this evening. Zero. Second to the motion.
Sorry.
Seconded by Justin Terribill. There is a discussion on the motion. There was discussion on the hearing. All those in favor of the motion to approve fine cattle at two thirty three Boston Post Road. With the nine conditions specified this evening, signified by saying aye. Aye. Alright, three. Those opposed. Two. Mark Calderella and Mark Delmonico opposed. Bob Tredman, Justin Terribill, Henry Thorson voting in favor. The motion carries three to two. The application, special exception application stands approved. Next on our agenda. The workshop to discuss drive through windows as an accessory use for financial institutions, pharmacies. People at restaurants or other food endeavor discovered, oh, yeah.
We have one more item, we just have to continue.
One more item?
Public hearing. So item A petition to amend this, or I'm pretty item.
Anyway, yeah.
Yes.
Public hearing A, of row number six, A.
Can be continued.
Petition to amend zoning reg regarding cannabis micro cultivation. So this, the applicant. Has made a request to continue without opening the public hearing. Therefore, the public hearing is not open. The agenda item, I will make a motion to continue the agenda item number six, A. To be open. On February twenty second at the regular. Meeting of hybrid meetings of the zoning commission. Is our second?
Yes.
Seconded by Mark Delmonico. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries nine zero zero, thank you. Now workshop, thank you, Chris, for sending. The latest version of collective thoughts.
So where we are with the workshop. Is I do have some collected thoughts, I don't have his. Everyone's collective thoughts and. I'm getting a little bit concerned because we need to have checks thirty five days in advance.
Yeah.
Of the public hearing and the moratorium ends in April, so.
I would recommend extending the moratorium.
We could do that.
I agree. Do we have to have a public hearing? Alright. Yeah, let's get us a date.
So I mean, I can do that pretty easily. Would you just go six months and make it clean like October thirty first? Would that be enough time? It doesn't mean you continue through, but I think this time we rushed a little bit. And.
So with the holidays in between and other.
Unless you want to do it to the end of the year, but I'm sure you had it done before.
Let's do it to the end of the year and get it done before. Alright, that's my view. Give us enough buffer, but let's promise ourselves to get it done before.
I, I think we can get it done and then we're just kind of. Hitting that line, we've had pretty big public hearings coming through here, you're going to have a lot more. Coming through, at least that way you're not rushed. I mean, you could put. December thirty first.
Okay.
Um, and then try to get it done by summer.
Yeah. That's better.
And we'll put that on the. Legal ads list and we'll have a public hearing.
It should be pretty easy because I can take what you did the last time.
Wouldn't it be helpful to just set up this different time? Have a workshop, so like it seems like a reason, yeah, yeah. It seems like whenever we put it on an agenda, because at the end we're just like, oh.
I've been putting it on.
Yeah, workshop.
I've been putting it on the agenda purposely. To kind of remind you, and now I'm putting April twenty eighth because the thing is we really need to plug away at it, and I think with everything we have going on, we've shorted ourselves. A little bit. I, and I mean, a special meeting is fine too, or maybe we could meet some night at six o'clock.
Are there any other workshop items that we need to go through that we could do more than one in an evening?
Meaning.
You want to make our night hard?
Kind of about the night after something else.
Well, I mean.
Start earlier. And just take one at a time, focus on one of them, yeah.
What do you mean, one?
Probably more reasons, take this one. Instead of next, in, in a meeting down the road after we extend it. Start at six o'clock and start at seven o'clock.
I mean, we could do a special meeting, you know what I mean, your next meeting or another meeting and start it. It's up to you. I mean, however you want to run it, you, but you're not suggesting add more content. Or another subject, it'll be just this.
Well, I, if you want, then we needed to knock it out. I'm saying, we're hunkering out and knock it out.
We got a lot of big things we can knock out, but it's not that easy to knock, I, I mean, I have a whole list of things that we need to.
I didn't say it was a reasonable. I'm saying, if you're gonna take the pain, take it all once.
Oh, I mean, I'll look and see if there's anything else, but I mean, we're going to go into moratorium if there's anything else you want to add to the workshops. I mean, do you want to spend a few minutes just kind of going through this?
Yes, I, I want to put some, put some dents in this, let's get this.
Give me two minutes, though.
You need another one?
No.
I get it.
Okay. Good, you want to look at this? No.
Well, I mean, I, I guess this is really where I'm kind of stuck because I'm getting a little bit of feedback here and there. I'm getting some general feedback and I think it's. In red, there's been, there's feedback that we've received or I've received and kind of plugged in because we've been busy. With other public hearing, it's really maybe just to kind of start discussing some of these and saying, okay, I hate the idea of this. Or this is a good idea, or.
Oh, okay.
Just with the, the stuff in the red or things to add in, and at least it gives me a little something to work with before your next. Workshop, but I mean, some of the numbers here where there's X square feet. Some members commented, you know. On some of the numbers, some members commented on all of the numbers, some members said, didn't comment on any of the numbers, so I'm just kind of trying to get a feel where. Where we are, and none of them are, are right or wrong.
Alright, let me try to keep it at a high level and not get into my typical detailed. News show, yeah, alright, so on the section fifty three. You have A, B, C, and D on, on the first page, let's talk A, B, and C, the each different kind of drive through window. And the hours of operation seem to be the sub, overall subject matter. Twenty four hours. For financial institutions, unattended A T M, stuff like that, drive through. That's okay. What about pharmacies? C V S have permission for twenty four hours, but they don't do it. Because there's no business, so do we wish to modify that? Does C V S get to keep their twenty four hours?
Well, if we modify it, they should be grandfathered in. If we, if we change it, which I don't think there should be twenty four hours, but. They would be grandfathered in.
Stay twenty four hours, we only have, we only have the one, C V S, right?
I mean, look at it this way, how many restaurants have tried twenty four hours and pharmacy have tried twenty four hours? We, we really. We really never, anyone who's asked us for twenty-four hours, it lasted a few months. I mean, maybe, maybe it's.
Under ten thousand people here.
Maybe it's the market. So do you need to say twenty-four hours?
Okay.
So. So do you say twenty-four hours at all?
Leave, leave pharmacy for twenty-four, for twenty-four hours. We only have the one. And it's pharmacy window is not going to. Not going to be sustainable anyway. Now. That leaves the third type of drive-through for restaurants. They should. Probably not have twenty-four hours as a default that they have to state their hours of operation.
Well, no, they all would have to state their operation in the statement.
Oh, yes, yes, but I don't think a restaurant. Has the same. Customer base need driving force in Old Saybrook to have twenty-four hours even as a possibility.
Maybe look at market dictation. Have to kind of throw it out there. I mean, if you.
Well, if you're going to turn the lights off after closing and there's no closing, then the lights never go off. Everything has a repercussion, you know?
So this was a suggestion. I forget who, hours of operation.
I did. I put that down.
Okay, it doesn't matter who.
I saw that and a lot of other towns put this in because I did some looking at other towns and what they had and this appeared quite often. This.
Alright, so leave it at that. The drive-through pharmacy, there was a comment about. Um, adding, including. And testing, including the distribution of materials for testing. I don't know if that means you. Do we need to get that specific? And what do you do? Go up there and get your COVID test and take it home? I I don't know. I'm just.
Testing is probably okay.
Alright, so I'll take that out.
What do you think?
Does it need to be called out specifically? If it's part of the pharmacy services, does it really need to be listed out separately?
I think the reason the text was in there initially is that people. When the regulation for pharmacies was through, there was a fear that people would go to the pharmacy and say, go grocery shop, you know, can I get a gallon of milk and? Okay. Alright.
It's through the whole.
Next one, um, drive-through windows must be located on a lot of not less than X square.
Wait, I'm sorry, can you back up to the trash thing? If the trash thing has to be on the same side as the driver.
Where are you with trash?
Hmm, where are you? What's that? C?
Oh, one trash receptacle.
See, you gotta have a trash. Trash, trash has got to be on the same side as the driver, right? So we have to have been to the window and you got your future trash in your hand. Where's the, where's the receptacle? If after the window, you're heading toward the exit, is it? Before you, before you leave the wall where the window is, is it, or is it between the building and the street? And how do they screen a trash receptacle that's accessible from the car if the trash is between the, on the building side of the driveway that leads to the exit? The drivers on the, the building and it's on the, the driver touches the building. The driver's got to reach the trash receptacle. Where is it? It's close to the building, closer to the building.
You can screen that. What? I don't think you can. You can't screen a trash receptacle, but you're required to be like ornamental.
Well, you'd have to put the trash. You can't, it doesn't make sense to put the trash receptacle between the building and the street. That's not good.
I've seen it where, where you're exiting, they have it on the side where you exit. Functionally, I've seen it right as you go to order.
Before.
Yeah. You see it before or you see it as you go out.
Yeah.
As you leave property. Not right on the other side of the window.
I don't, I don't want to have trash receptacles near the exit sign, you know, right near the sidewalk. That's.
Well, I think McDonald's has one on the passenger side.
Not the driver's side.
Yeah.
We'll think about it. Move on. Alright.
Well, someone else suggested having two receptacles.
Two receptacles. Where's it going to go? How's it going to work?
Somewhere there was two receptacles. Someone had suggested. I'll check if that was repeated. Alright.
Alright, D, with eighty thousand is what we have today.
That's the minimum lot size, the minimum of lot size.
Yes, sounds good. Do we need, do we need?
Well, there was a proposal to go to.
Should be larger.
King, what's that square footage?
I know.
I think it should be different for different applications. Bank doesn't need as much and restaurant needs a lot more. I mean, that's my, my gut.
Right, I agree with that.
Yeah, Liberty Bank's biosk doesn't.
If you practice to fit me, yeah, I don't know. I think it would be.
Is that piece of land eight thousand feet? That's a, it's a.
Well, that's not conforming. I mean, I wouldn't. So I thought you guys, you guys had the charts. I made you start somewhere.
Yeah. Here it is.
So what was Burger King?
One and a half acres.
So it's more like a hundred, hundred and twenty.
It's.
One and a half acres is like.
Or I'm sorry.
Forty is sixty, sixty.
Sixty-five.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking.
So, so going, going to eighty is, is, is more than this.
Well, eighty is what's there.
Eighty we have today.
I think eighty is too small.
Yeah, higher.
But then there was a proposal for a hundred.
I think eighty is fine.
Seventy.
Eighty is two acres, right?
Almost.
Those are acres.
Yeah, but those are acres. Little shy, but there's nobody except maybe CBS and Dunkin' Donuts are, are, are. Of that acreage today. Everybody else is less than, less than two.
And the thing you need to think.
How big is for her, for driving?
Thing to think about too is, I mean, I understand for the restaurant. But what happens when you, I don't think the financial institution needs.
Doesn't it be?
But what happens if you no longer have the indoor restaurant? Is that going to impact how much stacking? But this is something we gotta, gotta get into.
Yeah.
So if people aren't going into Burger King to eat, now you have more people in the stack.
You need more.
So do you need a bigger lot?
You need a bigger lot to stack. We heard from Starbucks. And we, you sent us material in the past week that shows, I forgot where that one was. Increase their stacking capacity. And that's the way it's gone.
So do you?
You gotta have that. You have to have a larger lot.
Or do you keep the lot and then by increasing the stack, you're going to have to increase? The lot to get your stack?
Well, yeah.
Kind of.
Six and one half thousand, I think. Force it one way or another.
We, we all agree that Burger King was a good setup. I mean, I, everybody says that. Nearly make your nap, which is sixty thousand.
So then leave the eighty and focus on the staff.
One more, one more, one more.
Yeah, I did too, but.
One more thing on D, the drive-through window may not be the only use on the lot.
Right.
Alright. So don't think like McDonald's or Burger King, think more like a drive-through at the shopping center.
Right.
And so. If there was. I think eighty K is okay. Eighty thousand is okay for now, but next.
We've got till the end of the year to debate it out. Well, with the thought, the financial could be less, put that in parentheses somewhere. Because I don't think you need eighty thousand for financial.
And then with that, the suggestion of excluding wetlands.
Leave, leave the, it's, it's, yes, it's redundant, but leave it in there.
Oh, no, that would be proposed as new.
Right.
Okay.
I would say leave it as proposed because. Those who want drives throughs may not read the rest of the regulations.
But we do. Alright, one additional drive-through window. May be allowed for every so many square feet.
I.
Lot size.
Lot size will take your hundred.
Well, the two suggestions were add another eighty thousand.
I have a second one tonight, but there's two.
Well, they're.
Probably going to come in front of us before this comes and rolls out.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, they're not because we're in a moratorium, so they can't apply. So the longer we hold this up, we're holding them up.
Because they pulled their application.
I've never seen a place say a lot that has more than one drive-through window business. Is anybody?
A lot that has more, oh, isn't McDonald's one than Burger King?
No, two on one. Right? McDonald's is one business, Burger King is one business. Have you ever seen a single lot that has more than one drive-through window business?
Application that's coming to you.
Yeah, that one by Big Y had.
When they went to Wetlands had three drive-throughs, that was done a lot.
Yeah, there was two separate.
I don't want to talk about it because, I don't want to talk about it because it's coming to you the next application, but that originally had three drive-throughs.
I have never, I've never driven to a lot that has. I'm drive-through.
I've seen, I've seen entrance and then they go this way and they're up.
Taco Bell.
How big is that lot?
Yeah.
I don't know. I can't talk about it. The hearing for your next.
Work on the water and the wet, because they have to circumnavigate the building in a counterclockwise fashion to have the driver next to the building. But it ends up circling the building and then coming back out to the exit.
Alright.
So on the, on the exit side, it actually ends up being two lanes. Because one is circling the building, the other one's actually exiting.
I just wish for the Dunkin' and Hattam has that. Somehow they kind of burn you around.
There's a Dunkin' Donuts in Middletown that has a pattern like that.
Going on sixty-six.
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry, the one on. Seventeen. By the Chevy dealership. So the, one of them has an exit traffic that has to cross other traffic, doesn't it? It, yeah, there's a stop sign there.
I guess, I mean, I don't know how the lots are configured, but figure also how the lots work together. Because like we're talking about Middletown, if you look at Route sixty-six, where you go, you've got the Home Depot and you've got Price Shopper. But in the front, you've got, you go in that main entry, you get a Taco Bell, there's I think a TD Bank. A Starbucks. So even if they're individual lots, I didn't kind of pretend they were one lot or how they.
The traffic pattern at the McDonald's, it's in Nyana, got four corners. It's that same type of traffic pattern. Where it wraps the building and then the exit is actually where the entrance is as well.
So maybe for the next meeting, we should get some aerial photos of different.
Yeah.
Drive-through only, no interior, sixteen stacking spaces. Where's that? Three cars on this side of the street and there's more on the other side of the intersection. It's a terrible design. It's a terrible design. Yeah, that's what we don't want. Yeah, sixteen spaces on site, not enough.
Alright, so maybe we'll just take.
It's been California.
Try to get some examples.
Yeah.
Connecticut example. So I, I mean, I think the thing with this is we really got to think about what you want. I mean, do you want multiple drive-throughs on a lot? You know, you could always go through and have multiple lots next to each other with shared access. With drive-throughs, just kind of how we're just talking about that split.
If it's a big enough lot. Maybe, but not really.
But then if, so I guess what I'm saying is we talk about it as one lot, but then you could split it into two lots to achieve the same thing. So what are you trying to achieve?
So if, if both are on one lot, you're. Limit the curb cuts.
Right, but I mean, do you want to pull up into a site and even if it's one lot or multiple lots, you go into that main curb cut and you go to five different drive-throughs? Whether it's a bank, a pharmacy, a restaurant, or, or five restaurants. Is that?
Hey, if you've got ten acres and you've got the space.
Yeah.
Or is one of the, one of the thoughts was having. In a different conversation or different workshop, we talked about having all the drive-throughs located in the back. So then you can get your stack. Versus having them up in the front and parallel people like our current Dunkin'. When you drive through, you're kind of. Parallel to the sidewalk and you've got people.
Generally speaking, if you can, yeah, the law permits. What if it doesn't?
Yeah.
What if it doesn't?
Where are we up to? E?
Well, we talked about one additional drive-through per lot may be allowed for X. There was an eighty thousand or twenty thousand and. Eighty thousand of additional lot area excluding Wetlands.
I would, well.
Or maybe we don't need all these lot sizes.
That's one, one opinion that Old Saybrook with a population of ten thousand, I don't foresee the need or desirability for Old Saybrook to have. More than one drive-through on a lot.
I agree.
Is America that? Is America that?
So, okay, so one for a lot. What if you had four lots in a row and each one had? Well, then you have minimum separation distance between lots. And if you have a thousand feet, that's a thousand feet is from McDonald's to Dunkin'.
But then what happens when it's McDonald's to the pharmacy? Does that matter?
Wait, wait, no, no, you're talking about drive-through restaurant separation. Not drive, not drive-through.
Well, we're kind of needed.
Drive-through window separation, Liberty Bank is width of the street sixty feet to Guilford Savings Bank. We can't, we can't have. Standard separation distance for financial because that one is, is so small, right? Or you're just going to make Liberty Bank and Guilford non-conforming? No, I would say set a different standard of separation for each type of drive-through window. Financial institutions, three hundred and something feet, because that, that lets all the ones on, in the B one district be fine. The only one that conflicts then is the Liberty Bank and Guilford. So then you do it at pharmacies, we only have one. Separation between pharmacy drive-throughs, pick a number, doesn't matter. We only have one. Make it the same as restaurants because then we're not discriminating. Pick a thousand feet. We don't, we already have a thousand feet separation between McDonald's and Dunkin'. More than a thousand from Dunkin' to Burger King.
Is there a thousand feet in between the, um, the Coles Plaza and the Benny's Plaza? Is that over a thousand feet?
I would. A thousand would be, a thousand, a thousand feet from the pump that.
Yeah, I was trying to visualize that map that David put.
From food bag, it goes up to, to the north, to the altar side of their entrance.
From the.
The pump is, yes, though. And so if Oasis were to eventually get approval and approval, then whatever, then they would be more than a thousand feet from Benny's.
I was just thinking of the two preliminary plans that we've seen, we. Be cognizant of not including. Things like that happen.
Coming up. If they're a thousand feet apart, Old Saybrook could have eight different distinct locations for drive-throughs. How many does a town of ten thousand?
Not the night, no.
And if, so you're trying, you're saying remove lot size in lot. Or additional lot size.
And front.
And then add separation distance between, but is the separation between the same type of drive-through? Or different types of drive-through? Are, are you taking people, are you taking the drive-throughs and spreading them throughout town? Whereas do you want them more? In an area closer to the highway or are you going to have them if you go every thousand feet? Are you spreading them up and down Route one? I'm just.
So, but this is just a question. So what happens if a business goes out of business? Like say McDonald's goes out of business. Then that's not considered a drive anymore.
It still is. It still is.
A use for use, yeah.
Use to use. Each line has a thousand feet.
So it'll be a Hardens or a CBS or. Potential.
Each line has a thousand feet between drive-through windows for food service establishments. I could say we could have a thousand feet separation between drive-through windows for food servers and pharmacies.
Is it a thousand feet from window to window or is it building to building?
Okay.
Well, I mean. I'm just kind of. Throwing it out here. We, one point we had. Pharmacies was approved as a reg. We had restaurants as a reg and then we had bank with drive, financial institution, whether with a driver. So do we? So do we want to just maybe take them and their bulk standards and separate them? I mean, the reality of it is. Unless there's something going on that I don't know, is the demand for banks in town? So crazy that, you know, are we gonna have a bank every thousand feet? You know, I'm just, or, or a pharmacy or, you know, I, I don't know, or a restaurant. Is that? Do we just give them their stand, their own standards and make them unique and kind of go back to that?
I don't know. I, I favor a thousand feet separation between drive through windows other than financial. Financial gets to have. I would, I would say three hundred feet. Because the only one that's. Wrong in that regard is Liberty Bank and Guilford Savings Bank. The Liberty Bank kiosk.
I don't think we're gonna get that many more banks because.
Who goes to banks anyway?
This, this is kind of where we're going, unless you're going for your mortgage.
I don't think we're gonna see banks fully. We're gonna have to figure out how to reuse that.
Yeah, go smaller. We'll go to smaller, yeah, small program. I, I like your thousand foot. East, East Line did it as, as defense to getting too many drive through restaurants. And there's been an effect for years and years that one, like five or six years.
I agree on that one.
For a single use, right? For one business on a lot?
Yeah.
So would you still want? The frontage requirement? I know that you've got the chart with the frontage requirement. So at one point there was a suggestion, drive throughs must be located, or it is the reg having three hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
Estimated lot depth from Main Road? Six forty? Or, what do you mean? Estimated lot depth from Main Road?
So that was when you, the depth of the lot, not the frontage, not the width. We put the width?
No. The width is not on here.
Was the depth?
Burger, Burger King is four hundred feet.
It's deep into the lot.
That's what it says here. Estimated lot depth from Main Road. Am I reading that right?
That's after a lot though, not the, where the building is furnished, right?
The lot I think is four.
The lot, four hundred feet?
Not to where.
Not to the building. From the road to the build, kind of the building.
What does it say?
Cause McDonald's was only like a hundred and something. I think it was the lot. I forget how I did it. It's been so long since we.
Well, that was a hundred.
A hundred, three hundred, hundred yards.
It's gotta be to the.
Three hundred and twenty because you've got the end zone.
Cause I think I just.
You have Dunkin' Donuts is four hundred seventy six feet. It's gotta be the back of the lot.
Oh, no, I'm not trying to have the building. It's the whole lot.
The whole lot, yeah, yeah.
So I didn't measure from the street line to the, I just measured. So that's the Dunkin', the Dunkin Smithfield is the floor, the forehead.
Yeah, it doesn't go all the way back to the river, or thereabouts.
You wanna just scrap this for now? It's late.
Yeah, it's a good idea to know.
We're not gonna get through.
Thank you.
See that, get a little bit of that said. Oh, yeah, we, so we didn't get to staff, I guess. Alright, so I'll figure out a time that either we can close a meeting. I'll schedule a moratorium for public hearing to continue this to give us time. Um. Bobby, ready for staff report? I think one of the marks suggested it.
I do. Yeah. Alright, McDonald's has one, one. McDonald's has, has three curb cuts. McDonald's has three curb cuts. That's way too many.
Uh huh.
And, and there're two, two of them are too close to the corner, so I like. Let's push them away from the corner.
Okay.
Yeah. I have photos, I should. Go over here. Let me show, let me show you why. Photos from Seattle where there's a Starbucks drive through only. There is no, no way to go in the building if you just walk up there. And the, um. And there.
So. I just get it.
Yeah. This, this side here, there were sixteen onsite stacking spaces around the building. Come out here and. There's more cars.
Wow.
That do. So.
Yeah.
If you had a good T O T recommendations for. Stacking spaces. We should go with our max. That's the exit side of the Starbucks building. Go around it and they don't fit. And as a pedestrian.
For this to which line? Yeah, there was, yeah, oh, yeah.
Come on.
Oh, did you give me the line? Yeah.
You're gonna go.
Okay.
I wanted to figure that out. Wait, I'll be, that's what it looks like on the side, you know, cars. I'm gonna be swerving aside. Cars are clogging up inside, I'm, yeah, cause they go, they go in and they go, they're all the way around.
Bring it up.
And they're on your streets. So that's.
What's your staff report?
Yeah. We're still doing workshop, I guess. That's the staff report.
I don't want that. No, I don't either.
Alright.
Staff report, staff, it's staff report.
Staff report.
Uh.
Next step, what do we do?
Staff report.
So, so I think we left it that. You're gonna have me continue the moratorium.
Yes.
Till the end of the year and I'll advertise it. I'll try to get some more stuff together, you know, at least two public hearings for your next meeting. And worst case scenario is we spend a little more time and. Have a workshop or meet earlier, try to do something. I don't know. I mean, maybe meeting earlier is gonna burn us out too much too.
So you, so you know, I've gone to, you have, you have to. It's only six pages. So you, um, some of it is. Going up like, but just go through it and decide what it is you want and, and we'll, we'll hammer it out. I mean, don't be afraid of being different. Just say I. Say what you want and we'll. We'll work it out. Some, some, some to me are no brainers and some are. Important. Yeah, page, what is this? Page four? Page four is like, the stuff at the top is important and the rest of it is just. Yeah, so there's really like four, like four pages worth of work.
Okay.
Please. Hammer it out. Anything else? What else you got?
Staff report.
Staff report? You know, a staff report?
Um, I think we're all. Uh, so you have a letter from Indigo Land Design.
This is.
About the potential. Um, um, relocation. Of a restaurant to forty five Mill Rock Road East, if you get that.
Some, I am.
Some, I am.
Oh. So I don't see, I don't see any, any problem with that, do you?
So they're pretty much gonna keep it the way that it is?
They're gonna keep the mini ball.
They're gonna keep the mini ball?
Yeah, you're gonna remodel the inside, right?
That's, so they're saying they're going in with whatever, the same seating, same lighting, same whatever else.
Same driveway? Same parking lot?
Yeah. So as long as there's no changes.
It's a relocation and if, if the restaurant's good enough, it'll draw business. Those that have been there haven't survived very long.
Well, I mean, it's, it's the Essex. It says it on that.
This is Mexican, I mean, this is Mexican quasi restaurant.
Yeah.
It's okay. Much better than a funeral. We, that was actually considered that one time. I don't even have a drive through window.
How many, you're traveling the road, drive through.
They have them down south where they have curving.
Yeah.
So instead of going the way, you can drive through and say your respects and.
Drive through weddings.
Yeah.
Drive through weddings.
My old chick Winchester was like CEO, yeah.
Yeah.
It's bizarre.
Well, I think the, the week is a little bit.
Respect, I'll go until I've been in a row.
I know.
So, yes.
Alright, so as long as there's no changes, it can go use, sort of go to architecture review board for any. Covid seating. So I don't know what's gonna happen this year with covid seating, especially now that the federal government's kind of. Let go of the covid. Movement, emergency, sorry, I'm tired. So we're gonna end up in a little bit of a jam because I don't know what the governor's gonna do. And. What may happen is a lot of the businesses that are now accustomed to having the covid seating. Are gonna go back to their normal outdoor seating. So the thought was when we do our outdoor seating renewals. If covid seating goes away. That the zoning commission could say. If you meet the building code. If you meet the fire marshal's code, we'll give you to the end of the year. To apply for it permanent. Or extinguish it versus saying, you're done. Is that?
I mean, I don't see anywhere in town where it's been abused.
I, I think people are gonna want it more and they're gonna get hit with it. And I suspect the governor's gonna have to say no at some point. I mean, it's gonna.
I, I, I.
Yeah, wait.
My belief is let it continue.
I, I, I'm agreeing with you, Mark. As long as it's not a safety.
I don't know. Right, it's not a real problem anywhere. There are some that work better than others.
Right, right.
And there's some like, was it Rosemary and Sage that has a tent?
Tent, yeah.
That's, uh, that, that's gonna be a building issue.
And that's, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I think the ones with tents may not make it like that circumstance.
Right.
But. There's other places in town that they're just all of a sudden, this is. Even though they know, we've all known it's coming. Yeah. Give them till the end of the year and say, look, if you intend to keep it, come and file for a permanent modification. If not.
A little pub has a tent in the back, but it's really not, it's not, not an issue.
It's not an issue.
As long as they don't start putting live entertainment in there, it's not a problem. Oh, so. Under the covid thing, executive order from the governor. Was that you could have.
And the same.
Outdoor dining, so then you could have, the entertainment was restricted. And so when the covid stuff goes away, does the restricted entertainment go away or will there be confusion about that?
Well, I guess the thing is that when it goes away, they can't have the seating at all.
Right.
So like you said, Rosemary and Sage, the Little Pub, all these different places that have covid seating outside. It'll all need to get taken down because they haven't formally modified the special exception permit. So my thought was. Let's, if it does not get renewed. Let's let it go till the end of the year.
Yeah.
And tell them, okay, look, we're technically supposed to tell you, you should take this down. However. If you wanna keep it and keep it set up for the year, then come back. To us and formally modify your special permit versus saying, okay, everybody, we're all done, take it down. Then have everyone rush in for a special permit. I learned February already.
Yeah, they give ample time as long as they get noticed well enough ahead. That's the best way to do it. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then at that point, the zoning commission can make that determination. I mean.
Right. They're not gonna be happy because they have to spend money for an application for something that they already had. But.
Well, if they're making money, maybe it's worth keeping it. Maybe it's worth the investment to keep it all the time versus.
Some might be like, okay, just get rid of it. Others might.
Alright, uh, next thing, just so you know, there's a little situation at the industrial park.
And that's about that.
So, um. One thirty seven Mill Rock Road East. It's definitely an interesting one. So the. Property owner went, there's the Iron House Fitness. So the, like the fitness center is located here and there's a building here. The property owner went in to put a, a loading door. Here. Which was fine. They put the loading door on to have this ram. But the new tenant. Is bringing tractor trailers in and blocking all the parking in front of the fitness center. So the people going to the fitness center are saying, well, gee, there's like thirty spaces here that are getting obstructed. So I'm trying to convince.
Including all the handicap work.
Including all the handicap parking.
Is there a fire lane, fire lane there?
I'm trying to get the property owner to come in to do this. So I'm getting more complaints from. The actual people who go through the gym.
It's a ban.
Yeah.
Then I'm getting, I haven't gotten any from Iron House. And, and I mean, it's dangerous. So we've been going back and forth on this since Thursday. So I told them that he needed to come in and bring a survey and modify the plan. And it's really just, we're gonna cut it. And he said, well, the building's been there since nineteen sixty. I don't need to get the survey. So a little bit uncooperative, but today someone did call, so hopefully he'll get a consultant. But the property owner feels that if they eliminate the spaces, there's plenty there. Really no need to come to us. So anyway, I'm working on it.
If it's blocking the fire lane, there's another tool you can use.
Yeah, I almost got run over by a semi today.
Oh. I think that's it, unless you have anything else for me?
No. Motion.
Second.